I can hear you now.
Okay, great.
So maybe you need to.
So maybe.
There's times to charm.
That's okay, right. A lot of practice tonight. All right, well, let me just say again, welcome all to the Select Board meeting on Tuesday, April 11th. I would like to ask if there's anybody online that would like to offer any community input?
And I just have one question, no input. Ed, sorry, because I made a joke about this last time. This is John Lavery. So you have community input at 7:00 PM and again at 9:45 PM?
That's correct.
Made a bad joke last time about do I get to go twice? But was that a mistake or do I have to choose or what's going on?
You don't have to choose. We just wanted to give people an opportunity after the meeting as well. If something had been discussed during the meeting and they wanted to comment on it at the end.
Thank you, I think that's a great idea. Okay, that's it.
Anyone in the room wishing to comment? Okay, well then let's move on to item two, which is the Middlesex County Retirement System. We have a motion tonight around the retiree COLA. And Ryan, please give us a quick update, thanks.
All right, let's try this again. So the Middlesex Board is asking towns in Middlesex County that are part of the retirement system to consider a one-time COLA increase from the 3% to 5% for its retirees. So this is on the $16,000 COLA base and its impact to Carlisle, which was the main question of the board sent to the MCRS, is approximately 14,000 assuming increases that are similar to this year. So it is an estimate. So they would estimate that the assessment for Carlisle would go up about 7.5% next year if this was passed. 1% of that being this decision and 6.5% being the annual obligatory increase. It's not obligatory, it's actuarially tied to increases.
And as my understanding is that this is something that all the towns in Middlesex County, some of which have already approved it and it's gonna go, whether or not Carlisle approves it, it's gonna happen?
So far, there has, there has not been a town that has turned it down. There are some that have not voted, but in the double digits now of towns that have approved it.
Okay, thank you. So I'd love to have a motion and then we can see if there's any discussion.
I moved at the Select Board vote to accept Chapter 269 of the Acts of 2022, local option to grant retirees a one-time COLA increase from 3% to 5% the system's 16,000 COLA base.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
So where does the 1% fit into this motion?
It doesn't, so that's the estimate of the impact of this vote. So if you vote to approve this and all the other, or a majority of the towns in Middlesex County agree with the board that this should be increased, then this would be a one-time bump of 1% that would hit our assessment next year for 14,000.
Okay, so the 3% to 5% includes the 1%?
The 1% is a estimate of the impact of the 3% to 5% on Carlisle.
Okay.
Yeah, it is confusing and it's also confusing because they talk about the $16,000 base. And from what I'm understanding, no matter what you, if you make more than 16,000, you're still only gonna get 5% of 16,000 or $800. If you make less than 16,000, you will make proportionately less. So if you make 24,000, you don't get 6% of 24,000, which is why I'm guesstimating why that, it's only a 1% impact. It's totally confusing.
And this 1.4 million is in our budget?
So this would be for FY '25.
Okay.
So this would not impact us this year.
So which, is that the county retirement that we're talking about here that's in our operating budget?
Yes.
Is that the line item?
Okay, so they assess this annually based on our 55 retirees.
I just wanted to make sure I knew where it went back into the budget, county retirement. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, can you speak up, please? It's, it's difficult to hear on the mic.
Yeah, I was just, Travis, I was just asking where in our operating budget this amount can be found and it's in the county retirement line item.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah.
My question, I just wanted to confirm, I believe, is it about a $14,000 impact for the year for the budget? Is that the approximate number?
That's the estimate from the actuary at Middlesex. So that's what they believe the impact would be around 14,000.
Thanks.
I don't know if you heard this part, but it won't affect the FY '24 budget, it's the FY '25.
'25, yeah.
Ryan, is it, is it only for '25 or '25 and thereafter?
It should be thereafter.
Okay, and so I can't, I mean, I guess if I spent a couple hours really probing, I could figure it out. But the way it's presented is ridiculously confusing. So it doesn't, a majority of towns, if a majority of the towns vote for it, it carries regardless, right? It's imposed on the towns, I'd say no anyway.
Correct, that's part of the retirement systems bylaws.
And is it one town, one vote or is it by the amount of retirees you have?
One town, one vote.
Right. Okay. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Are we ready to vote on this?
Yeah, let's just go on it.
Okay.
It's a weird law.
Yeah, well, let's do this by roll call. All those in favor, Arnold I.
Brown I.
What L I.
Reed I.
Snell I.
Thank you, motion carries. Then we'll move on to item three, which is the town election hours. And Peggy, would you like to come up and sit at one of the, in one of the chairs? Thanks. And so we, we have a motion here too, once, if you scroll down in your packet. So Peggy, you want to just give us a quick summary of what you're asking us to vote on?
I'd like to do as we have done in the recent past and reduce the hours.
Hold on one second, Peggy. Travis is asking, is your mic on? Do you have the light on? Is it lit?
Now it is.
Okay. Please start again then.
Okay. I'd like to do as we have done in the recent past and reduce the polling hours for that annual election. It's something that's allowed by law if the town, if the Select Board approves it. And my reasoning is that this election, there are no opposed, or everybody's running unopposed. And in the past, when we've had everybody unopposed, the turnout is extremely low. And it would just, it would just give the poll workers a break from the 13-hour day. And I, again, we've had this done in the past. The last time we did it was in 2021 and we did it for five hours from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM and there were only 391 ballots passed at that time. It was the same situation, no ballot questions and no unopposed races.
Would someone like to put the motion on the floor and then we'll see if there's any discussion or questions?
I moved at the Select Board vote to approve the recommendation of the town clerk to reduce the polling hours for the May 16th, 2023 Annual Town Election to five hours, beginning at 2:00 PM and ending at 7:00 PM.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, David.
I'm just wondering if we should have said to reduce the in-person polling hours because you will have vote by mail.
Yes, we're still doing vote by mail, early voting vote by mail and absentee.
Okay, anyway, that's okay.
I have a quick question, if I may. So I guess my concern is just those people who, you know, work later and therefore can vote in the morning. What, when you, when, when we have the full-on, you know, national elections, what percentage of voters are voting in the morning versus in the evening? I'm just trying to get an idea as to how many people we might be cutting out in doing this.
The early voting in the, like at 7 o'clock when the polls would open, it depends upon the race presidential. There's a, you know, usually a good line of people waiting to come in. But all the in-person voting on election day for the big elections, it's pretty much been a steady stream as long as I've been town clerk. We haven't had a lot of people waiting in line for a long time outside. So it's, it's really hard to say out of all of that exactly how many, what percentage comes in, you know, before going to school, dropping the kids off situation.
How about, how about a non-national election, like where we've had the full hours? Is it, is it busy in the morning?
I honestly can't remember because it's been a while and I've only been town clerk since 2019. But it would depend upon if there's some choices in the races and some more people are coming in. But I don't, my opinion, I just don't see any large amount of people coming in early in the morning. I do find that people tend to want to come in later in the day. But there are, you're absolutely right, there are some people who are here before 7:00 to be able to vote, yes.
Peggy, did we get any feedback the last time we did this when there were no contested races? From people saying, gee, I would have voted if I, if it had been open in the morning?
No, I didn't hear anything like that at all. And, and you know, you hear things.
Yeah, yeah. Is it allowed? I mean, this might be crazy to do logistically, but is it permissible to do, you know, say a 7:00 to 9:00 AM and then close and then open up again for voting from 2:00 to 7:00 as you're proposing? Is that, I don't know if that's allowed by law.
Let's see. I saw that for voter registration, you can break up the hours. But the, I don't see anything in the law that says you can or cannot break that up. Do you happen to know, Ryan? Okay, I don't know if you can break up the hours like that.
Why couldn't you, because other elections, you have it over multiple days, right? That's breaking it up. I mean, in an ordinary election.
You mean because of the early voting and then?
Any voting, I mean, she has several days of vote, like if it's a presidential election, it's days of voting.
I mean, because of the early voting.
But election day itself is just one day.
Oh, okay. Are you proposing any other days or just that one day?
Just election day, yeah, the town elections.
Is this the first time, though, that we've had mail-in, vote by mail for a local election?
No, it was, it was also the case in 2021.
That's when we had like the, just the 69 voters come in in person?
Yeah.
And, and how many did you have voting by mail?
I'm sorry, I didn't break that out. It was about half, to be truthful.
Only half?
As I remember.
So you only had like 130, 40, 50 people voting?
Probably like 200. So being, in that case, we were open five hours. Yeah. And it was about 200 people, it was very slow.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly understand the, the thinking of reducing the hours. I'm just wondering again about the, might want to vote early.
What time do you normally come to work?
My normal hours are 9:00 to 4:00.
Why wouldn't we have it all?
Well, it's not just Peggy, there's a lot of other people that are involved in the voting.
Yes, on election day, we have a staff, we'd have a staff of at least six.
So your experience is that the afternoon is the more likely time people come to vote?
First thing, the first hour can tend to be busy, then it just drops off.
It'd be worth knowing the question of whether we could break it up, seems like that.
Honestly, since you can vote by mail, and the last time we were able to vote by mail in an uncontested, only about half the people did. I feel that there's very little excuse for people. I would, I would be much more, you know, in favor of opening it for longer if people showed us that they were really interested and wanted to vote. I don't think that's been demonstrated. I don't think it's a matter of us closing off the vote.
Right, no, that's.
So, and, and if there's enough advance notice that these are gonna be the hours and if you cannot make those hours, we'll have, you know, a ballot mailed to your house, you have the opportunity to vote.
How far in advance does one have to request a mail-in ballot? Or?
They can start now.
But what's the latest they could ask for it?
The, I forgot the cutoff for the, I think it's four days.
They could come into the office and say, please give me a packet.
Well, they can come into the office to apply or they can come into the office to vote absentee in person.
They can actually do it here.
Absentee in person.
Plenty of opportunities. What's the window of that? When does that?
The last day to vote absentee in person is the day before the election. The cutoff or deadline is at noon.
And but how, when does that start? Now it already starts?
I haven't started with, I just ordered the ballots.
So I'm just trying to say, if somebody reads in next week's mosquito that we, or this week's, I guess, that we voted to restrict the hours and says, oh crap, I wanted to get there in the morning, when can they start coming in and vote right here, anytime they want that you're here?
In about a week when I receive the ballots.
That's plenty.
Yeah, that's plenty of time.
That would be at 9:00 o'clock.
Yeah, but it doesn't help people that want to do it at 7:00, I guess, right?
Right.
But they could come in and get a packet.
At 9:00.
At 9:00.
Is there gonna be any weekend voting?
No.
Could they email you, how could they request? I mean, if somebody theoretically, you know, says I work every day, I gotta be at work at 8:00 or something. Can they email you and say, please mail me a packet? Or what, what is the way by which they could get a packet, fill it out and mail it and not have to come in at 9:00?
They can, the applications are currently online on the website. They can fill out that application and email it to me or mail it to me.
There you go.
And then as soon as I have the ballots, start mailing out ballots to anybody who's.
So all these little protocols, will they be specified on the town website, on your page in the website?
Absolutely, yeah, as we've done in the past.
So that's, I think it's communication.
And we can put something on the front.
Make sure that nobody feels disorganized.
Yeah, yeah.
Decided to have bankers on it.
Yeah, yeah.
And I guess, you know, I really sincerely hope that we have a ton of ballots come in.
And hold your breath.
And that people will, you know, be really interested in their town government, the, the place where they actually have some input and some puissance. And they will come out and vote regardless of the fact that it's non-contested, to show their support and that they go out to all the meet and greets and they learn about their candidates and they ask them questions and they tell them what they need and want.
Good. Okay, any more questions or comments? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote on the motion, please. Arnold I.
Brown I. What L I.
Reed I.
Snell I.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously. Want to move that.
Barney, can I, can I just interrupt? If David and would, if you guys can speak up a little bit, your mic seems to be fine, Barney. But maybe Nathan as well, just I guess get a little closer when you speak would be helpful.
Is this better?
That's much, much better, thank you.
Yeah, you notice it's the two females up here that you don't have any trouble hearing.
No, well, David's fine.
No, that's good, thanks Travis for the input. All right, so we are at the next agenda item, which is to see where we are on the police chief contract and next steps. So I'm gonna turn this over to Ryan to give us an update.
Thank you, Peggy.
Yes, thank you, Peggy, sorry.
So as seen in the mosquito and articulated from, from my office, the contract negotiations with Lieutenant Dunbar ended mutually and amicably, meaning we couldn't meet in a number. So the next step in the process for the Select Board would be to decide whether or not to continue with the strong recommendations from the screening committee that we all, I think we all believed did an excellent job vetting candidates or to come up with another solution, which could include reopening the entire process. So the range is available for your decision tonight on what are the next steps.
And Travis, do you want to add anything in terms of where we are now and how you see us moving forward?
I, Barney, I, I kind of defer to you on that because we, we've met in the executive session and if you'd like to take the lead on that, that would be great.
Okay. Well, we, we know we have, we know the screening committee came forward with three candidates to the, that they brought to the Select Board and that those were all highly qualified candidates. So when we had a discussion last week in executive session, I think we're all interested in considering the number two candidate whose name is Lieutenant Amendola and he's currently serving in Brookline, is that right? Yeah, so. And, and we had the consultant who's been working with the screening committee on this search reach out to Lieutenant Amendola to see if he was still interested. And he's very much, very interested. And so I think our decision tonight then is to decide whether we're ready to have an interview with him and consider him for our next police chief. Are there any other comments or things to add from anybody else on the board around this? If not, I guess we should take a vote on that. Is that, you think that's the appropriate thing?
I can make a motion because, I mean, I would, I would make a motion that we interview Lieutenant Amendola from Brookline with a target interview date of Monday, April 17th at 7:00 PM.
Yeah.
Patriots Day. The 18th. We picked the 18th.
The 18th.
For some reason, it's in my calendar on the 17th.
I think I did too.
You didn't put it in my calendar?
No.
So I will change that to.
That's right, it's Tuesday, the April 18th was the tentative date, yeah.
Yeah, April 18th at 7:00 PM.
Second, oh, great. And we know that Lieutenant Amendola is available at that time, is that right?
He is, he's aware that if this decision was made, that there would be an interview with the Select Board for a decision and that would be one week from tonight, so Tuesday.
Great, thank you. Any more discussion? All right, we'll hear.
I think it's the right thing. I mean, even if it's a single candidate, I think it's an important enough position that we should have an interview.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah. Great, all right. So all those in favor, this will be a roll call vote. Arnold I.
Brown I. What L I.
Reed I.
Snell I.
Excellent, thank you all. So put that in your calendars for next week and that'll be a public meeting. So anyone is welcome to join us. All right, let me move on then to the appointments. We have a number of appointments this evening. The first one is particularly important and I'm very happy to see Carol here. Carol Grunich is up for appointment to be our new Director of the Carlisle Council on Aging and Human Services. And I see Vernov, one of the board members is here with her and I don't know if there's anybody.
Anne's also there.
Anne Jones. Yeah, hi. And then Anne James, the Chair of the COA HS, yes, great. And there was a screening committee that considered, well, looked at, there were several resumes, interviewed two people, Carol and one other. And as a member of that screening committee, I can tell you that the, it was, there was really no question after that about who everyone on the screening committee wanted to see appointed to this position. And Anne, I don't know if you want to say something as the Chair of the Board about the rest of the board members? And if you do, you wouldn't mind coming up so you can be heard. Thank you. Make sure the light, yeah, the light is on.
Yeah, the light's on.
Yeah, the COA HS Board unanimously and enthusiastically supports this appointment. Great. So with that, I'd love to have a motion from one of you.
Move to appoint the Acting Director Carol Grunich to be the, Grunich, sorry, to be the new Director of Carlisle Council on Aging and Human Services, subject to successful negotiations.
Second.
Thank you, Nathan. Any more discussion? Well, we're very pleased, I can assure you with this appointment. All right, let's have a roll call vote then. Arnold I.
Brown I. What L I.
Reed I.
Snell I.
Thank you all and congratulations, Carol. I know you're gonna do a fabulous job.
Before we leave, well, we've left that topic, but before they leave, the three esteemed COA HS folks, have you guys sorted out who's going to present the tax reduction by law at the meeting, on meeting? You will be doing it, okay?
Okay, great, thank you, Carol.
My, just minor word of advice is it's a slightly complex issue in that the math is a little, so just, I would recommend that you get like Ryan and myself a draft at some point so we could just look at it with different eyes, because you guys are inside of it and sometimes when somebody's inside an issue and they present it, they assume knowledge on the part of the rest of the group and that's all, thank you.
Great, all right, well, thank you so much. Great to have you all here. Right, we're gonna move on then to the next appointment, which is for the Department of Public Works. Who would like to make this motion and then we can have any discussion that we'd like?
Okay, move to approve the recommendation of the Department of Public Works Foreman, James Hall, and appoint James Young and Scott Rierson to serve as heavy equipment operators for the town of Carlisle.
Second.
Thank you. I don't think Jim is on the call, but Ryan, would you like to speak to this?
I would, so this is part of our, our effort to structure the DPW and make sure that the, the talents and the skills of our employees are being used correctly and that they're being compensated for and aligning it to job descriptions. So at the labor driver position, you have training and certifications and others that lead to being a heavy equipment operator, which requires certifications and more technical skill. And then leadership training would start at that point and move into foreman and director type positions. So Jim and Scott are two of our longest-serving driver laborers. They are changing their jobs and what they do daily in order to make sure it matches the heavy equipment operator position. And we are supplementing any needs they have in terms of certifications, but they are both heavily certified. So they would be being promoted to heavy equipment operator with the associated wages. And then we would be backfilling DPW positions, the vacancies with driver laborers to train the next group of heavy equipment operators. So this is the first of many vacancy fills you'll see with the DPW, but we're very pleased to have folks that are not only talented but also show leadership and potential in our Department of Public Works.
Thank you. Any other questions?
This isn't, this is just filling vacancies, it's not adding staff.
Oh, no, we wouldn't do that without telling you.
Just wanted to ask.
Yeah.
It's just, it's the idea that this is coming to you with a structure so that you can answer that question instead of just doing it and shuffling it.
How long have these positions been vacant?
So one of them was vacated when Jim Hall moved to the foreman position and then we had a recent resignation resulting in the second. And then, well, we'll have a discussion later about potentially having more vacancies.
I don't want to have that discussion.
In a good way, promotions.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Let's take a roll call vote then on the motion. Arnold I.
Brown I. What L I.
Reed I.
Snell I.
Excellent, the motion carries unanimously. And then we have two more motions about appointments to different committees. Who would like to move the first one for the cons comm?
I'll do them now. Move to appoint George Shepherd, 45 South Street, to serve on the Carlisle Conservation Commission with a term ending June 30th.
Move to appoint George Shepherd, forty-five South Street, to serve on the Carlisle Conservation Commission with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Thank you. Um, there's a note, both a note from the cons comm and a note from George in our packets. Uh, I think it's pretty straightforward. Any questions or comments? All right. Hearing none. Let's do a roll call vote then. Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
What, L.I.
Reed, I.
Snell, I.
Excellent. Thank you. And welcome, George. Uh, then the, then the next appointment, please, for the, uh, stewardship committee.
I move to appoint Claudia Talland, sixty-seven Cutters Ridge Road, and Shane Usher, thirty-three Timothy Lane, to serve on the Carlisle Land Stewardship Committee with terms ending, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four and June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five respectively.
And they also have, um, thank you, Kate. They also have, um, their letters and then another, um, endorsement from the Conservation Commission for their appointment. So, uh, unless someone has a comment or question, I will move ahead then to a roll call vote on this appoint, these appointments. Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
What, L.I.
Reed, I.
Snell, I.
Thank you all. That carries unanimously. All right. So, um, we are now, uh, on the agenda item about the Homeworks Energy Memo of Understanding, which is in your packet. And, um, I'll go ahead and make, Bob, I think, was Bob going to be here to talk about that?
Yeah. So Bob, Bob is online and by far the best person to speak about this.
Okay. Hi, Bob. Oh, yeah. Welcome, Bob. So Bob's a member of the Energy Sustainability Committee and, and prior to that is on the Energy Task Force and several other great things in town. Uh, anyway, Bob, thanks for being here. And yeah, why don't you walk us through the memo of understanding? Thanks. How, and how, I mean, you don't have to go through it in great detail, but just in summary, how this is going to work.
Right, right. Um, just for a bit of background, uh, the MassSave sponsors, the MassSave program is the incentive program we have, uh, in Massachusetts and it's operated by the investor-owned utilities in the state and they're referred to as the MassSave sponsors. But they have, uh, established something like fourteen, uh, uh, home performance contractors that conduct free home energy assessments for homeowners in Massachusetts. Um, there are also a number of independent, um, contractors who are authorized to perform those assessments as well. One of the things that a number of towns have done in Massachusetts is partner with a specific home performance contractor in an effort to accelerate the rate at which residents, uh, perform those, uh, free home assessments. And the main purpose of those assessments is to try to help the homeowner understand opportunities for improving the energy efficiency of the home. And also it, it does make the homeowners eligible for uh, a number of the incentives that are available through the MassSave program. And most notably, uh, insulation and air sealing, i.e. weatherization are the two that, uh, are most important in, in this home assessment. Uh, and the, the incentives can be quite attractive, uh, you know, seventy-five to a hundred percent, uh, of the, uh, cost of the weatherization measures can be, can be covered. So, um, that's the, uh, motivation, uh, the memorandum of understanding that we're recommending that you, uh, sign with Homeworks Energy, um, is, um, really an agreement for us to help promote Homeworks Energy and allow some co-branding on materials. There is no obligation for us to spend any money or any time in particular, other than, uh, steer people towards them as the preferred, uh, home performance contractor for doing the MassSave energy assessments. There's no obligation by any homeowner to use them. They're free to use anyone that MassSave authorizes. So, um, those are the highlights. Uh, there are, I, I can't tell the exact number of communities, but there are a large number of communities who have entered into similar partnerships in Massachusetts. And I'm not aware of any particular issues. Um, I did talk about this with Brian several weeks ago and he had town council look at the memorandum of, of understanding and they did not, uh, flag any concerns. Um, they didn't see any particular risks. And because there are licensed installers involved performing all the actual work that gets done in the home, it, it doesn't seem that there's a lot of liability for the town. There's a very little liability for the town. Um, I guess the main thing that we, uh, on the, um, Environmental Sustainability Committee need to be careful about is making sure that in, uh, helping to promote this one particular contractor, we are clear that people are free to choose another contractor if they wish. Um, but the other important piece here is that in terms of the actual weatherization work, the MassSave program does stipulate what these contractors charge. So there's really, um, in terms of weatherization, there's really not going to be any cost advantage of going to Homeworks Energy versus going to some other contractor. Uh, in theory, their pricing should be the same for the same work done on the home. So there's, there's not a, um, there's not really a reason that people would want to go out for competitive bids on the work that is covered, the weatherization work that is covered by the MassSave program. So with those, uh, with all that in mind, the, uh, this, the ESC unanimously made this recommendation to team up and we'd like to invite them to our Route to Sustainability Day celebration and have them uh, start introducing themselves to the community.
Okay. And why don't we have a motion and then we can discuss.
I move to approve and authorize the select board chair and/or the town administrator to execute the memorandum of understanding between the town of Carlisle and Homeworks Energy, Inc. This MOU is subject to two one-year extensions at the discretion of the town.
Second.
Thank you. So any questions or comments on this? And we have a, I think the full memorandum, yeah, is also in our package.
Um, this is similar to what you did several, many decade, couple, decade ago at least for the solar panels. Is that right? You know, didn't you have the, didn't the?
The solar challenge.
Challenge. Is that what it was? The one? Yeah.
I would say it's actually a little different than that. Um, the solar challenge, uh, involved actually working with a, a team that was under no obligation to provide standardized pricing for the services they were offering. So, uh, that was actually a more competitive partnership situation. But it, we actually did, this is before my time, uh, uh, Carlisle did partner with another home performance contractor many years ago, uh, maybe ten years ago, something like that. Um, and, um, I am a little fuzzy in why that stopped. One reason may have stopped is that particular, um, contractor went out of business. So that would, uh, that may have been what ended it or may have ended before that. I'm not sure. But I think it was successful. I remember Dan Cook had commented that, I don't have the exact numbers, but he commented that it really generated a big spike in, uh, home energy assessments in Carlisle.
I think it's a good idea. Yeah. Have it done to my house.
Anyone else? Comments or questions?
No, Bob answered all my questions in the, in his intro. I had a lot, but he answered them all. He must've been in that scary place known as my brain and knew what I was going to ask.
Travis, anything from you?
No, it was really helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I think this is a great idea too. All right. Um, hearing no more discussion, uh, let's do a roll call vote. Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
What, L.I.
Reed, I.
Snell, I.
Excellent. Motion carries unanimously and, um, all right, all systems go on this one.
Madam Chair, may, make a suggestion.
Please.
You're flying through the agenda tonight.
Yeah.
Um, Bob is also a key member of my, uh, CCA working group to provide you a recommendation for the Community Choice Aggregation Contract that'll expire on January first. Um, there was information in the TA report and, um, a, a request for you to consider us to work on indicative pricing, but I know Bob can explain it better. So I'm suggesting you take that up with him.
Sure. We could do that now. Um, yeah, Bob, do you want to, uh, tell us a little bit about that? Um, this is the, um, Community Aggregation Program, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Sure. Um, so we are now in the, well, we've just completed the second year. We're now on the third year of our second contract and the Community Choice Aggregation Program. Um, and, uh, in our current contract, which ends in January, twenty twenty-four, we have three product offerings. And, um, just to maybe, uh, let me just step back a, a bit for the background here. Um, Massachusetts is one of ten or twelve states that allow municipalities to negotiate secure electricity supply contracts on behalf of their communities. So this is not something that's available, uh, everywhere in the U.S. Um, I don't know the numbers, but there are, um, a substantial number of resident of, excuse me, of municipalities in the state that do have, uh, community choice programs. Um, we currently work with a broker, which is Standard Procedure, a colonial, uh, power group. And, um, Ryan appointed, uh, the committee, uh, I shouldn't say committee, the working group I'm on with Sue Thomas, Glenn Reed and myself to start looking into the next contract. Um, and we, we got a little bit of a head start compared to what we did three years ago. Three years ago, we were pretty last minute, to be quite honest, and that doesn't necessarily work to our advantage. So what we had, uh, what you had decided, you, the select board had decided three years ago is that, uh, uh, for that contract, current contract, we would have three products. The, uh, one of those products is the default, which means, um, anyone who is getting their, uh, s- service, electricity service from ever source, that means supply. Everyone uses ever source for delivery. There's no option there, but as long as you're under ever source basic service, you are automatically enrolled in the default product once the town approves the contract and the contract goes into effect. So that's important to understand that there is a default that people get into unless they opt out of it. And that product, we had decided to go with the maximum amount of class one renewable content that we thought in our best judgment would be, uh, priced similarly to the basic service, uh, price from ever source. Even though the, it would be a greener product than the basic service through ever source. So that would be the standard default. And then there would be two options and there are two options. One option would be the cheapest product we could get and still meet Massachusetts requirements for, for renewable content. And the third would be, uh, one hundred percent green product that would be one hundred percent Massachusetts class one renewable, um, electricity. And so, um, I'll just give you the prices that we're paying right now, just briefly for calibration. And this is not the total price you pay for electricity. This is just the supply component. So for a standard product, and these are approximate numbers, not exact, it's about eleven point five cents per kilowatt hour. The basic is ten point six cents. And the green one hundred is thirteen point nine cents. Um, just for comparison, over the, uh, course of the first two years of our, um, current contract, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty, count, uh, calendar twenty-one and twenty-two, ever source, uh, supply price varied from ten point eight cents to seventeen point nine, seventeen point nine was the, it's come down, um, we're expecting it'll come down a little bit. I'll get to that in a second.
Bob, that was standard or basic? You just quoted.
So the range I just gave you, uh, is ever source basic service and that's equivalent to the basic product under our CCA in terms of renewable content.
Yeah. So Bob, for each of these, um, how does it compare to our previous contract?
Uh, in terms of price or renewable content?
In terms, in terms of price.
Um, you know, I didn't write down those numbers. Uh, they're a little bit higher, a few cents higher for, for each of the products. And we did not have the, actually, we did not have the green one hundred and our standard product had a different mix of renewable contents. Those little apples and oranges, unfortunately, but.
Um, just, just to calibrate the board. So this isn't an ask to approve pricing tonight. It's to describe the process. The pricing would be secured on the twenty-first, brought to the select board on the twenty-fifth, but it would need to be executed on the twenty-sixth. So we wanted you to ask questions.
Close, right. So Bob, what, I'm sorry, I probably said it and I didn't catch it. What percent, the standard product is what percent renewable?
So the standard product is, uh, I didn't actually mention, I'm glad you asked, is currently fifteen percent above the minimum requirement, uh, that the state mandates, which that minimum requirement this year is about twenty-two percent. Last year it was twenty percent.
Okay. So it'd be twenty-two plus fifteen, so thirty-seven percent.
Right.
But not from local. In other words, just, I mean, we've had this discussion many times before. It benefits somebody with a wind farm in Texas, let's say, right?
Yeah. So I'm, uh, I'm simplifying the discussion a lot, uh, compared to what I presented three years ago. Um, and I'm only giving you the renewable component that is Massachusetts class one REX, which, um, I think most people agree has the, uh, biggest, um, impact, uh, environmental benefit. There are other components that are required and mandated and there are other voluntary components that we can include. Um, but they don't have the same impact as the, uh, class one REX.
Okay. So let me rephrase then, given that. What you're saying is to, you know, roughly that the basic product makes no representation as to renewable content. The standard product now would have to be thirty-seven and a half percent from class one REX, which is local. I don't know if mass or some regional local. And, uh, green is a hundred percent class one local renewable. Is that roughly correct?
So the, the basic product, uh, whether it's ever source basic service or our basic product would still have to have in twenty twenty-three has to have twenty-two percent class one REX. That's required.
Okay. And what is the rate that, um, it, it increases every year? What is the rate of increase for each year?
So next year it, uh, goes up two percent. Um, and, and I think in twenty twenty-five, it will go up three percent.
So, uh, so they'd be like twenty-two, twenty-four and twenty-seven? And how that would go? Twenty-four and twenty-seven? Um,
And class one is, sorry, you interrupted. Class one is mass. It comes from mass sources?
Well, mass, it's called mass class one because it's the requirements that Massachusetts puts.
But it's not sourced necessarily.
It is not necessarily sourced in Massachusetts, but it is generally sourced in, um,
region.
New England states. Um, I don't know the specific boundaries, but it's not, it's not necessarily Massachusetts itself.
But they can't trade, it's not a trading thing like used to be where they just trade with some, you know, southern utility for, or some western utility for their wind or whatever, right?
Well, the, the way the, uh, renewable energy certificates work is that you're actually, they're sold completely independently from the electricity. And so what you really are buying is the right to claim credit for using that green electricity. And that is how.
It is a trade.
It is, yeah, basically.
Right. Okay.
So, but again, we're just authorizing.
I understand, but.
No, we need to understand because Ryan's saying you had a date to decide next, weeks from now, so.
I, I guess I want to go back.
Decide what we want to bargain for.
Yeah. Uh, go back to the standard. Uh, so the standard then, standard option would be, as you said, fifteen percent above the minimum, which translates to thirty-seven, thirty-nine or forty-two percent for each of the three years of mass. for each of the three years of mass class one.
Well, if we, if we chose to go with the fifteen percent, um, but we may, we may choose a different percentage and the the um guidance that you gave us three years ago was to go for the highest percentage we could that we estimated would not exceed the cost of ever source basic service. Now, you know, so that's, we don't know if the number would be fifteen percent this year uh for the next contract, or it might be a slightly different percentage, if you want to continue uh along that, if you wanna make that same um recommendation to us.
And the balance, though, let's, okay, so let's, let's assume it's thirty seven, thirty nine and forty two, and the balance then, like the sixty eight percent, or sorry, it's not sixty eight, it's fifty eight percent, if I do my math correctly, uh, at the end. Um, that is still the wind sourced from, maybe from Texas, but so it's, you could still.
Oh, the balance could be coal, right?
No, I think that was not the case on the standard one this time around, and I wanna just check to see if that's what we're saying that we're going to do going forward as well, because is what I understood for this concurrent contract that we're in was it was somewhere above the minimum, right now, at or above minimum, mass class one renewable, and the balance would be some other renewable from somewhere else, so that it was really still a hundred percent green, it wasn't just a hundred.
Really?
Yes.
Yes, that's actually, Kate's correct. Um, the uh but it is important to understand that not all of these recs are created equal. They're raised, raised very differently, and they have very different environmental impacts.
But it's greener than basic, which didn't have that second component of any kind of green.
Nor did it have any extra fifteen percent.
So, oh, yeah, I gotta, then that's different than my recollection. So what you're saying is basic is twenty something percent renewable, and the rest could be anything, coal oil, nuclear.
That's what, that's what.
And I I still have to get clarity on the mass one rec. It is sourced in the region somewhere. It's not a
Yes.
credit trading with somewhere else, okay.
In the region and New Eng, generally, the New England region is my understanding. Um, and some of it may come from New York State, I'm not sure.
Okay, but but generally benefits, I mean, if our so let's step back from the detail and go to the ESC level view, right? Because we're gonna talk about stretch codes and all kinds of things you wanna do. So i- if we're trying to benefit the environment, I mean, one, one philosophical thread is the earth is the earth, so who cares if Texas benefits or we benefit? What's the difference, right? Everybody benefits if you reduce the carbon footprint. So I would say, who cares where it comes from? That's one school of thought. Another one is, no, they're doing a hundred percent wind, or they're doing a lot of wind anyway, they're just getting credits for it. They're not really helping anything if we decide to buy their credits. They don't change how much the energy. So the way to force change is to actually take a region that was maybe previously dependent on a brown source and make it a green source. So the mass class one would do that, right? Doesn't, again, doesn't matter if it's Connecticut or mass, it's the region, right? So, okay, so then, then we could say, all right. So now it's a price issue. It's kinda like with a stretch code or any of these other things, or a hybrid police cruiser. Like, wha- what are we willing to pay to be green, right? And I gotta ask you another question. So if we were to adopt a stringent standard, that's the default, but an individual homeowner could opt for less green standard or not?
So the individual homeowner within the CCA program, they would have three options, three specific options, as we've talked about.
Okay, so they can always elect.
But they can elect to not be in the CCA.
Yeah.
They can procure their electricity through ever source, they can procure their electricity through a independent supplier. They can sign up with a community solar program. They have a lot of different options.
Yeah, in the, in the case, well, I'm assuming that the people that would do it for price, or the people that really are hurting, but the thing is that um, going to ever source, if they had done that, our basic, which was our least expensive and which we
Yeah.
put in there because we were worried about senior citizens, for example, was ten point six cents.
Right.
Um, and ever source went from ten point eight to seventeen point nine, so it makes no sense for them to not to.
Well, they would do at least that, right?
But they, but they're using brown.
You're not forcing, so what we, what did we do to make, did we make standard the default? In other words, if you do do nothing, you get the standard, right?
That's what.
So we could make, I mean, again, philosophically, we could make hundred percent the default, like to force you to make a choice.
Yes.
But you're not, it's different than saying the stretch code is the rule, right? Because
Correct.
that you don't have a choice. We impose it and that's it. So we can make a statement, and we can at least force people who force is not the right word. We can induce people who don't passionately feel that, or economically feel that they have to go lower to make the green choice. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we, we had a lot of conversation. I wasn't here three years ago when this was discussed, but I was six years ago when it was discussed.
Yeah, true.
And um, you know, I, I think we talked a lot about, you know, do we just go to the hundred percent, or do we not go to the hundred percent? And where we fell then, six years ago, was we were, we were, you know, I think the way we looked at it was, this is, this is really a way for people to have a a, a, you know, volume negotiated way of doing green energy. Um, and which is awesome. They can opt out of it, but they have to opt out of it. But we decided the middle because we were afraid that by going the full, which was noticeably really more expensive, that it would drive people out of the program. Um, and we might have more people dropping down. So that's why we went with the middle one. I don't know, Bob, if you remember, I know that you were there six, six years ago, but I think that's really where we landed and why we, we decided to go middle of the road.
Correct.
And I think there was uh another big factor, um, is that even though there is the option to drop out of the program or go to one of the other two products, the reality is, most people don't pay much attention to this, and they end up with the default. And there, there's concern that people who maybe truly can't afford it, would end up with the default and not know that they, or take the steps to go for the less expensive product. And I was a little surprised. I actually looked to see um if there are any communities in Massachusetts, or which communities have a default offering that is one hundred percent mass one renewable. And I didn't find any. I'm not suggesting there aren't any, but um um I don't think there are any. Uh, I did a kind of a ninety percent problem, probably, I did this quick and dirty version as opposed to the um rigorous study, but um the ones that have like forty five to sixty percent mass uh class one are uh, believe it or not, Lowell, Newton and um Brookline. And only those three are in the forty five to sixty percent range. There might be a couple others that I missed, but I'm pretty, it's not a lot of.
Fifty five to sixty, what's that?
Perme?
What is forty five to sixty percent range of what?
Of the uh Massachusetts class one renewable content.
Does that mean they picked a hundred percent, but half the people opted for it? What is, I, I have a hard time understanding.
Yeah.
What you said, did they pick a standard that was not a hundred percent, but was higher than the thirty seven percent, or did they pick a hundred percent and like half the people opted for it?
They picked, uh, they uh no, there, they have an opt up option to go one hundred percent, but the default option they picked for the three towns was somewhere between forty five and sixty percent.
You didn't paint that option for us.
No, we didn't.
So make a motion if you want.
Yes, so are we, but are we trying to provide you with directions for the?
There's nothing.
Well.
It's a motion right here in the.
There is.
I move to authorize the town administrator to collaborate with the broker and the CCA working group to secure indicative and executable pricing in preparation for a new contract, the select board's approval on April twenty six, twenty twenty three.
Second. But I, thank you, and uh, actually. Isn't it?
Yeah, but that doesn't.
Direction as to how we want.
Right, the idea is to give them direction.
My question, are we giving you direction with tonight about the standard, basic or all green, or is that uh what the default will be? Are you gonna come back and that's what we would decide at the next meeting? We don't have time.
So you're certainly welcome to give any direction you would like, uh, but we're not asking you to do that. What I would suggest, uh, what I would say that we were planning to do with your authorization is proceed along the lines that we did three years ago. And to our best uh ability, select the default product that would match the price of the ever source basic service, whether that was fifteen percent or twenty percent or something else, and we would talk with our broker to get some guidance on, you know, our best guess uh as to what that would be. We have to understand that we um, we don't know what ever source pricing will be. It changes every six months. And it's been very volatile. It went up high uh last winter and uh we, we know national grid dropped a lot. They're dropping steeply, uh, and I think I think maybe May is when their new pricing starts. We're in a, we're in a slightly different cycle with ever source. So there's a lot of, we're gonna be doing some discussions with the broker about where to position that. So I guess um unless you wanted to take a big leap, let's say, forward, which, you know, certainly the ESC would be happy to hear. Um, but when I found, when I found that there were only three towns that had a very high percentage of mass class one, I didn't, I did not identify any towns that were, had a default product that was one hundred percent class one. It felt like a, that may be too big of a step. Uh, and I didn't, you know, you certainly have the authority to suggest we do it, but um I uh, I can't justify making the argument to you that we do that.
Okay. I appreciate your, that, that explanation.
The reason it was brought to you this way is the working group believes that the price is at a point where we needed to rush the decision because it's gonna come back up.
Mm-hmm.
This has become the classic. How sustainable do you wanna get at risk of what price? So what the working group is suggesting, and of course, we can be we're to serve at your pleasure, is that this would be the time to try and secure pricing because of the cost overall and not fully change the structure of it, because uh we could lose, you know, we could lose the buy-in power of the lower pricing.
So can I ask you some questions on that? First of all, are you, so you're implying that this is a locked in pricing for the three years?
So the structure of what we have to do here, it makes it difficult. So we have to time it to your meetings, but also lock in a price.
Oh, but I mean, whatever agreement you strike, whenever you strike it, it's a firm fixed price over the, I mean, it has escalators, but it's
Yes.
it's not volatile, like the, it's not dynamic pricing.
Correct, we make a deal and bring it to you.
Okay. The second question is, I would imagine Carlisle has essentially zero purchasing power, right? So is there any leverage? Do we bring any leverage? It's kinda like that cable TV discussion. Like, what do we negotiate? Is it really just a timing, or do we bring any sort of leverage to the negotiation?
My understanding is the only real leverage we have is timing, but Bob, if you have different opinion.
Well, it is a, our broker does go out and get competitive bids. So for our uh twenty five million kilowatt hours a year, or whatever it is, um in the other, there will be interest in serving that market. The term of the contract does not have to be three years. That's just what we've done in the past. So if you wanna do shorter, we could, just FYI. And uh, what's interesting, and I cannot explain this, when you look at the data, which we did three years ago, and say, how does price correlate with size of the community and the amount of electricity used? And there was not any correlation.
Okay.
And it really has to do with timing and frankly, luck. This is uh, these prices go up and down and are, yes, uh, basically what happened is our broker said, you know, you really probably do want to get pricing here, at least have the option to lock into it because we think the prices will go up as the summer comes on. And as you approach the deadline, we have to get a new contract in place, the suppliers understand that time is not on our side anymore, and they price accordingly. Uh, one little snippet, now every situation is different. But three years ago, we were advised, this is right at the start of COVID, and we were advised by our broker to lock in early in the spring, and we did not. We would have saved you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, had we done that. Now, in hindsight, we, you know, we may not have made that decision, we don't know. Uh, but there is a lot of um wheeling and dealing, and this is, is like, frankly, it's a little like playing the stock market on the pricing. It's the luck of the draw, and you rely on your broker to advise you on whether these are good prices. But we could, we could lock into a contract, and in the fall, maybe prices will be even lower. We don't know.
I, I also seem to remember we were giving, given different contract prices for different terms, and we picked the three year one, uh, again, from the advice from the broker. Because it, it actually gave us a lower price if we were locking in for longer than some of the shorter term contracts and I, I don't remember all the details, but I, we got a lot of information. And uh, yeah, we should have looked, listened to our broker, because he's the one with the.
All right, so one lesson is listen to the broker, and the broker's telling you do it now, right? So that's, okay, but I'm still confused on a point. The forty, fifty, sixty percent option has not been made available to us because we didn't ask for it? Or our broker is not offering that?
We didn't ask for it. We asked for the plus fifteen percent, we asked for the hundred percent.
And is that really the right thing for us to do, to only go like smaller amounts and then a hundred, as opposed to, it seems like the ones who did select a greener option didn't go a hundred, they went to something less.
Well, I was just picking an example of three communities that had put a, again, a default um product out that was had a, a much higher.
We don't have that. My point is, we don't have, we don't have that choice available to us. We have
We do have, we do have that choice. We could
Okay.
we could add that. Um, I, I think um my advice would be that three products is probably uh the max we wanna offer to avoid a lot of confusion, and the price difference, you know, is probably going to be a, a, a couple of cents, two or three cents a kilowatt hour.
That's a lot.
You know, and, you know, twelve thousand kilowatt hours a year type average in the community. It's not, it's not a lot of money. Um, so splitting it up, uh, at some point, we're splitting hairs a bit if we offer another product in the middle.
Okay. Um, fair enough. So the last question for me then is guidance here. So your broker's gonna go competitively. Vendor A, say, lowballs the basic and, and highballs the standard product, and broker B does the opposite. I mean, you still need guidance to know where we would like you. In order to evaluate different bids, which have different prices for each of the three, you would have to know where we want the default to be, right? I think.
I think what, what Bob was saying was that, you know, there, there are, there are options. We could go fifteen, we could go higher than fifteen. He's not sure really right now, given the competitive market, where it should be. And what we're asking them to do is work with the vendors to see what is that mix, where that makes, that makes the most sense. To maximize as much of the renewable as we can, but um try to keep it as close to the um
Okay.
the basic um as we can, because he was suggesting that we not go all out. Um, because right now, it doesn't necessarily make sense. Maybe in the next contract it does, but I think what we're doing is we're authorizing them to go out and negotiate.
Well, we, of course, we're doing that.
And determine, and determine really what that right mix is based upon knowing what our goals are.
But if we, I agree with everything you said, but if we've already concluded, which I think we have, and certainly you guys, Ryan and Bob seem to feel, that a hundred percent is a non-starter. Why are we pursuing a hundred percent? Why not do the sixty, I mean, why not?
No, no, it's not a non-starter. It is definitely an option that we wanna have. It's not, it, it's not, we just wouldn't choose that as the standard, the default.
But I'm, I'm trying to understand the rubric that you provide the broker to evaluate bids where the pricing structure is different for different levels. You have to give them a sense of which of the options is more important. If, if you come up with your pricing where you lowball basic and you have the more expensive version at the, where you think we're gonna be, and, and Barney does the opposite to evaluate. To evaluate apples and pears, you have to have a rubric and I'm struggling with. The sense of how you're going to evaluate. Different prices at different tiers. And I wonder why. You, to, exactly to Nathan's point, why you wouldn't entertain a forty percent or a sixty percent. You don't have to end up there, but you have to look at it from a matrix and say exactly what Nathan said. What is the optimal? Where, if you plot it on a curve, where is the dip at the intersection? Of the most green and the most affordable.
That's what we're asking you to authorize us to do.
Okay, but I'm not hearing that in any motion. It's the first, I'm the only person, I'm only articulating it. Nobody else is articulating it.
I think it's because of the process. So you can't. You can't dictate it that way from this room.
Well, it's guidance to you. It's not dictation. It's like. What rubric will you use to, because you're going to come back with choices for us and we're going to have one day to do it. So I'm still saying, I'm, I think you should look at some forty to sixty percent range. You don't have to end up there. I take Bob's point, you know, too many choices, people kind of get paralysis.
So my worry there would be that. It would come back to the board. You would debate the merits of fifteen to forty percent. Maybe not do it and then we lose the ability to have.
No, we're going to do it. I think we're committed.
Second thing I would recommend is that you be the select board appointee to serve on the. Negotiation team.
Which is the second motion here.
Okay.
You could participate in this.
Hey Bob, how many people are choosing? Do we even know? But how many people are choosing the hundred percent option now?
We should know that.
So the hundred percent green, um. Twenty-one households.
Out of a thousand?
Out of about sixteen hundred.
Yeah.
Well, um, accounts.
And Bob, how many are opting out?
Um, I don't know how many are opting out completely, um. So we have actually, yeah, almost sixteen hundred meters in Carlisle and that includes. Municipal and, uh, commercial. Uh, that are in the program, but I don't, so. Not a lot of people have opted out, but the ones that have opted down to the basic. Basic product. That's two hundred and eighty-four households.
Wow.
I say households, I'm, I'm neglecting the commercial and whatever, but.
Meters.
Alright.
Meters.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, okay. And then the rest, when.
The rest are all standard, yeah, they're standard default.
Yeah, that's about.
Is there a second to the motion? I didn't hear one.
Yeah, Kate, I think Kate made it.
I seconded it.
I do think we should move on if it's possible. Alright, because we're running late here. So, um, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded and I'm going to go ahead and take a roll call vote. And then the second motion will be about pointing somebody from here to be a representative. Uh, let's do a roll call vote. Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
What I.
Reed, I.
Now, I.
Thank you all.
Move to appoint David Modell to serve as the select board representative to participate in the decision-making process on April twenty-sixth.
You have a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor, uh, let's do this by roll call. Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
What I.
Reed, I.
Now, I.
You have a way to look at your calendar, make sure you've got.
Yeah, listen, I want to, I want to double check something though. This says April twenty-sixth. As being our next select board meeting because it's actually the twenty-fifth.
The, the twenty-first is the indicative pricing day. The twenty-fifth is your meeting, the twenty-sixth it would be executed.
Okay.
So that you can opt out.
That's the negotiation.
Okay.
Twenty-first, Friday, the twenty-first.
That's when I need to be.
Yes, okay, great. Let's move, uh, let's go back to where we were then on the agenda. We jumped, uh, ahead. And we are now moving to the, um.
Sound meeting.
Town meeting warrant. So, and I see that we have our town moderator here. Hello, Wayne, welcome. And, uh, let's go back to, um. So it's, I mean, item number seven. Let's go through the warrant briefly and then we'll come back and make the motion. And, uh. Let's see, let's, let's point out though, the things where we, that we actually need to, um, discuss. Ryan, you mentioned, um, a couple of things in, which I've forgotten what they are, but what did you want to point out our attention?
Okay, so the.
In the warrant and we, we'll go, we'll briefly go through the whole thing, but just, yeah, what were the ones in particular?
So many hands have touched the, the warrant, including since this packet was built. So I have the most. Recent version up here and can. Can walk you through, through any potential changes. So the.
Okay, great.
Big items, and they're, I think they're all important and big, I just want to say that. Are. Number five. Uh, the reevaluation is not needed this year. So the finance team, which is a, a collection of staff. Is saying that we don't need this article so that it should be removed. Article nine. Which is the department revolving funds authorization. You remember we talked about removing two accounts in this year's budget. The town moderator who can speak for himself is sitting there, but believes that this could, um, be included in the consent agenda. So I wanted to make sure that you heard that recommendation. The no change to budget, uh, FinCom did. Recommend this budget as you presented it at your last meeting. So unless we're reopening it, there is agreement there. In article thirteen, capital equipment. We included some language that, uh, just helps the town accountant and it does not change. Anything in the actual vote except it says to purchase and install. Or to purchase or to purchase and equip to make sure that we can properly purchase some of the items.
That's above here. We don't have that. Okay.
In the Corey Auditorium lighting project, we just changed the wording to include safety. I believe that was a FinCom recommendation. Um, the largest changes are to the CPA. Articles, this is a, this is a me thing. I wasn't here for the history of these, but, um, the town moderator and I would agree with him, wanted more detail in the CPA appropriation. Um, there's also an additional CPA article here. The reason for that is the CPA has been using their administrative funds to help them with administrative support and they've. Run out of money for that because they only appropriated three thousand, although they are allowed to use up to five percent of the total kitty. So this would allow them to. Fund, um, that administrative support for the remainder of the year. And then the.
What's that first? That's article sixteen there.
Correct.
Right, okay.
And I will go through each one individually. I'm just keeping it at a higher level. Um, we added a lot of detail to article nineteen, which is the town offices Saturday hours article. That the town clerk brought up. So this is, um, explicitly stating in plain language what the town clerk is intending with this article. Which is to count Saturdays, um, or not in various deadlines like elections. And those are the only substantive changes besides editing and, uh, legalese. But this has been reviewed by. Staff, it has been reviewed by town council several times, uh, the town moderator who again is there and feels weird speaking for him. And myself, so, um. We are ready to review it, hear recommendations and where changes are your guidance.
Are any of those items that Ryan mentioned where there are changes? Are any of those ones that, um, anyone here on the board wishes to discuss? Are we comfortable with the changes? Don't see. Uh, Travis, um, anything in the, uh, items that Ryan mentioned? That you wish to discuss further? Are you comfortable with the changes?
I'm comfortable.
Okay, great. Then, uh. We should from here then go back and go item by item and take our votes.
Yes, I just want to be, um, clear. The article numbers will change, right? Okay, so when we're talking about consent agenda, those, those numbers. We'll just be saying, let's put these all together, but not really worry about the number because that will change. Okay.
I'm going to change it in real time too.
Okay, okay, so.
Even better.
Alright, so, um. So the consent agenda will now include. Um, all, uh, it'll be. Two through.
It's still eight. Still eight if you take out five and include nine.
Gotcha, okay. So it's two through eight.
Okay, we're doing that.
Yeah. Okay, so, um. Let's, uh, may have a. Let's, I guess we have to take these one by one and vote on them. Yeah, so, um. Uh, I'd like a motion to, um, recommend passage of the consent agenda. Did I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion on the consent agenda? Alright, all those in favor, roll call vote. Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
What I.
Reed, I.
Now, I.
Thank you. And then let's move on to, uh, following that one, we come to, um. So the, uh, go down a little further, uh, Ryan, if you would. Oh, you're trying to change the numbers, okay. Uh, but.
Move that we approve article nine.
Uh, and give us the title, yeah.
FY twenty-four salary wage table.
I have a second.
Second.
Uh, all those.
Good question.
About the salary and wage table, okay.
So do you? What, what article is it in the packet?
It's ten.
Ten, okay. Um, so you've got a couple of tables here. Uh, one is. The actual, who, who is in what bucket? And I just wanted to ask Ryan, so. Is everybody presently in the right bucket? In your mind, you've gone through this. You and, um, Aubrey.
Yes.
Okay. And, um. We don't.
That's a loaded question. So everybody is in, it's a loaded question in my mind, not, not in theory. Based on historical. Decisions, based on parity, based on the study and based on my analysis, I believe everyone is in the bucket they should be in.
Okay. And so for example, DPW director, we, we aren't going to have one or we do have one, right? I'm confused on that.
So DPW director is located in, um, grade eleven.
Right. And is there a director in that one? Gary retires, is there a director?
Subject to your.
Okay.
Decision later, but yes.
And we have a COA HS director in that same bucket and. So that would be her new grade, salary grade or whatever.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, alright. And then you have the table. Of the wages and that's. For the coming year. So how are people's, so people's. Steps are determined by their longevity in the position?
So this was presented to the board.
Right, I remember, but I just want to be refreshed.
Um, so each individual is different.
Right.
So we move them on to the scale. The primary goal was to move them on to the scale.
And then they step.
If we could move them to the appropriate step, we could, but the, the wages. Essentially dictated where they fall in the new scale.
Yep.
In exchange for the clarity and the change in years to fifteen and the wage and step.
Okay, thank you.
Any more on this item? Okay, then let's take a roll call vote. Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
What I.
Reed, I.
Now, I.
Alright, then we're moving on to the prior year bills.
I move the, um. Select board, uh, support article ten, prior year bills.
Any discussion? Well, that's what the new number will be. Uh, any discussion? Oh, sorry, who, no.
Second.
Thank you, Kate. Um, any discussion on this one? This, we've seen this before. Alright, hearing none, um, Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
What I.
Reed, I.
Now, I.
Thank you. And moving on to article eleven, this is what I think will be eleven is the FY twenty-four operating budget.
I move the select board support article eleven, FY twenty twenty-four operating budget.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just have one question. The thirty thousand for the sustainability coordinator is in here?
Yep.
As operating, okay.
Yep, right under, at the last line in general government.
And we separated it. So this wouldn't necessarily be separated in this way, but we did it for transparency. So sustainability would fall under a different bucket normally.
Uh, wait a second. That's the committee though.
No, this is just sustainability and general government.
That, yeah, went from thirty-five hundred, which was this, this, I thought was the old energy. And this new, the new sustainability committee budget. And I really am, do not want. A committee to have a staff budget in it.
Well, this is, that's why it's listed as sustainability, not the, before it was the Energy Task Force.
Okay, so then why is the thirty-five hundred in there?
Because that's what the budget has been in the past.
I thought that was their budget. No?
Mm-mm.
I just want to be sure.
Because I really want. What we're really funding here is. You know, what they want, but what we really suggested is funding is consulting and, um, part-time staff hours to help them. That kind of goes along with the same thirty-five hundred that they had.
It also includes, uh, requests to support route to sustainability day annually.
But it's not their budget.
It's not their budget.
The town, it's a town hall budget that is being used for sustainability. Purposes. Any other questions? Alright, hearing none, uh, roll call vote on the operating budget. Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
What I.
Reed, I.
Now, I.
Thank you. And the next one is capital equipment.
I move the select board supports article twelve, capital equipment.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Kate.
Rereading it.
Yeah, any, uh, any questions about this? We've seen all of this before too. Alright, hearing none. Roll call vote please. Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
What I.
Reed, I.
Now, I.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, we are flying through these, but it's not because we're not interested in it. We've just discussed this so much, just in case anybody's wondering.
Right.
Are we flying through this? We've had many, many, many discussions about this.
Yes.
Right, I move the select board support article thirteen, Corey Auditorium lighting project.
Second.
Any questions, comments on this one?
So this one, um, this is the one that we actually have a, a good quote that will go beyond town meeting for. And this is the same amount we talked about last time. We started like at one eighty or something, didn't we?
Jerry, I mean, Jeremy, do you want to come up so people can hear you? Thanks. This is Jeremy, sorry, what's your last name?
Uh, Jeremy Burley, forty-seven Hart Farm Road.
Thank you, thank you.
Want to move your iPad away?
Move, yeah, there you go, moving away. Um, yeah, so, so we have five numbers. Yeah, I'm moving it away. Jeremy Burley, forty-seven Hart Farm Road. Uh, we've had five numbers, um, you know, we had started, uh, with much higher numbers and been working with, um. Uh, with the vendor to make sure that we were looking at just what was needed. This number is the middle of the road. It is our, uh, we have a number, uh, we have a, uh, quote for them. It's a good quote to get the job done that we need done. There are not extras in that. Uh, we had two numbers that were lower than this that were, um, kicking cans down the road. So one was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That would be, um, this year, we would be back in the future, either next year or the year after to replace the other pieces that. That need to be replaced. And then the seventy-five thousand dollar option was a, uh, um. Just to address the, the most failed components. Um, and all of that does not move forward with us. Um, so from that about fifty percent does not move forward. Uh, it, it plugs the gap for the biggest gaps that we have. We get to keep some of it, uh, but not all of it.
And so what are the compromises at two eighty?
Uh, the compromise is at two eighty or, um, we don't have, uh, we aren't replacing the, um. The follow spots. So there are follow spots in the back that would be, um, um. Operated by a human, uh, to follow the actors on stage. Those are very old. I think they're older than what is in the, uh, the auditorium. Uh, it's older than the auditorium itself. And then, um, uh, what they had proposed for that was, uh, about thirty grand more. Um, that would include, uh, um, fixed. On what we call the house electric, which is above the audience, but pointed out the stage, uh, lights that have the ability to move. Uh, and so those we, we left out for this.
So it sounds like that could be added. Fairly easily later.
That's, that, that was our thinking as well as, uh, you know, really addressing, uh, the core systems, uh, the core functionality. Uh, putting that in place with an, an option that has, um, LEDs versus, you know, fifty-five thousand watts of electricity, which is what's used today. Um, and then, uh, in the future down the road, um, you know, maybe we could. Either ask for that or try to run fundraisers for that because it wasn't, it wasn't a lot extra. And then the pieces that are not in that, that were in the much higher one, um. Which was about three hundred and forty, three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, um, was a, a like system of. which was about three hundred and forty, three hundred and forty eight thousand dollars, was a like system of what we have now, more dimmer packs than we have ever used. And so we removed those, saying we aren't using those and we don't see those in the future. So there are some dimmer packs in that because they're all required. But for the most part, we're moving to LED fixtures that don't require that technology anymore. So we pulled those out and said, don't need to have like.
Thank you, and thank you for your work on this.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you have some, some kind of institutional sustainability in this? Meaning, you, you have done so much work, and one of the things that came up in a number of these meetings is that we hope that down the road, this will be able to be transferred and all the knowledge is transferred. Is that kind of budgeted in there as well?
As far as the training of how we, you know, train, yeah, we've been, we've been having a lot of conversations with, we have a community theater in town, SLOCK, the Silvy R S.
Have a yard.
Have a yard, lighting opera company, you know, and they have, you know, they, they use the system. The Drama Club exists within the town as well. SLOCK has approached me and asked if I would be the lighting director for, for, for their program as well. So, you know, I think there are a lot of folks within SLOCK that have some lighting capabilities. And we would want to be figuring out how we do some, some education for this, I think, going forward. It's, it's, it's a volunteer post at SLOCK. It's, but, but I think they do some good work and they've got some good people, and I think that there's an opportunity for some internships. We've certainly seen some eighth graders return this year that were in seventh grade play last year, really taking the lead and putting some fixtures in place, programming the board and things like that. We're hoping that some of the seventh graders that participated this year will be those returning eighth graders next year as well. But I think, yeah.
So I think the question is really more of a statement.
I think we.
We need, we need to make sure that you're not a volunteer of the life.
I agree with that statement, and I think, I certainly think that we can do a lot more from a documentation perspective, so that the you know, Stephen and the facility teams understand what kind of maintenance needs to happen on these systems. That hasn't happened, that's having, you know, had an ad hoc basis, and that has, you know, been in a big impact to us. So that is part of the documentation that we have asked the vendor for, to make sure that it's very clear on, you know, what needs to happen. You know, who could do that, you know, and make sure that the maintenance happens on a more regular basis going forward as well.
Is there any programming that's required for any of these systems? And does the vendor provide that? And do we have an ongoing contract for them to do it as we need changes?
That, that the ongoing piece is not in this particular equation. There were a couple of things that happened in place, and we were talking to CCHS, they have bought a, a different control system. So when you walk into the theater, there will be on the wall touch panels. So if somebody walks in and they are just the director of the choir, and they just simply want some choir lights, they'll be able to choose that without doing anything else. There is some programming that needs to happen for something like that. And then the board is something that would be operated and programmed as well, and there's some initial programming that goes in place with that to select light fixtures, but then you would put a program in place to say, this is what I want, scene one, scene two, scene three. So that happens with every single play with some, some little instruction. The, the, the CCHS made a poor decision in the technology that they chose. They chose a, a system called a Creston system, which is a very expensive thing to maintain. So when you change the programs, you have to bring in very specialized help, and it's a very expensive undertaking, and they've got a lot of problems with that particular system. This particular system is, is based on DMX, which is a theatrical lighting control system, and it's something that you don't need a specialized vendor necessarily to make changes. What you can say is, I want lights one, two, three, and four to come up in this particular one, and I want them to come up at this percentage. So with some documentation, I do believe that somebody in a technical role at the school would be able to do that with ease versus having to bring somebody in with specialized software like the Creston system requires. And certainly, you know, if we needed something bigger than that, then, you know, we could look at a contract for something like that. But we made specific choices about the technology to make sure that we didn't end up in something that would require fifteen thousand dollars in the future to reprogram every time something changes.
Thank you. The Creston problem is why I asked.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did a lot of meeting with them at the CCHS to figure out what they did wrong and tried not to reproduce that.
Yeah, good. Learn from others. Well, thank you very much, Jeremy. We appreciate your work on this, and I, and, you know, this will be presented, obviously, at town meeting, so there'll be all this information will be helpful there.
Didn't we vote this yet?
We haven't voted on it, so let's take the, the motion's been made and seconded. So all those in favor of the Corey Auditorium Lighting Project? Arnold I.
Brown I.
Would I?
Reed I.
Now I.
Excellent, and I'm conscious of that Travis has to be off at nine, so let's see if we can move. We're doing great. Let's just see if we can move through the rest of these warrant items. The next one is.
Somebody else take over.
Pardon?
Somebody else take over on the motions.
Making the motions, okay. Next one is Greeno Barn.
Move that the Select Board recommends passage of Article fifteen, of Article fourteen, Greeno Barn removal.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? I would just point out that we've, the language says to deconstruct and remove the Greeno Barn, and then in the summary, and at the bottom, it says we're committing, you know, with, where possible, we're committed to removing the barn using sustainable practices. All right, if there are no other comments, roll call vote. Arnold I.
Brown I.
Would I?
Reed I.
Now I.
Thank you.
I move that we let's see, take a position on CP, that's Finance Committee.
No, if you go to what.
Yes, I move that we take, that we
Support.
Support Article sixteen, so no, it's fifteen, sorry, the CPA appropriation.
Yeah, it's the additional FY twenty three CPA appropriation.
Additional, yeah.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Just one question. Are we taking a motion, are we taking them all at once, or are we going to talk about each of these individually?
Each individually. Yes, so this is a roll.
Seven, the motions are with seventeen.
The CPA projects, yeah, they're, so fifteen is sixty, what's fifteen?
Just the administrative expenses.
Thousand to cover administrative.
That's why I was, I was stumbling on it as well.
All right, all those in favor. Arnold I.
Brown I.
Would I?
Reed I.
Now I.
Thank you, and now we get to the CPA annual recommendations. And the first one is about, it's motion one, if you see it there, the appropriation of different amounts into the different buckets. Did somebody make that motion?
Okay, I move that we support the fiscal twenty four CPA appropriations.
You have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on this one?
This is confusing, so.
Well, just the appropriation of the money that we have.
The math is confusing. You've got ten percent, seventy one thousand, but five percent is ten thousand?
Where, where do you see?
Oh, item D.
Five percent of estimated revenues.
Oh, you're right, that doesn't make sense.
I mean, they're taking, before we get to the, you had sixty five and five seventy, you're taking the bucket of seven hundred and
Divving it up.
Seven hundred seventeen thousand, I guess, and you're divvying it up. So I don't know what's going on.
Right, that number doesn't work.
Is it the percent we should pick?
So they, you are allowed to bucket or spend five percent. So five percent would be bucketed. You can appropriate different amounts. So this is an appropriation of ten thousand.
Then what happens to the leftover money?
It goes undesignated.
Undesigned.
I mean, it stays in the administrative bucket.
It doesn't read that way. So it should, if it's ten thousand, is ten thousand the right budgetary number for them? So forget, we should, we should strike five percent, just say ten thousand, and then I assume, does it need to be said that the balance will be, remains an undesignedated?
Well, that's the last item E.
Sixty five percent of the estimated rev.
Uh, no.
See, that's item E.
Doesn't say undesignedated.
It goes into the reserve account, which is the undesignedated.
Just, oh, the reserve account, okay.
Yeah.
So we should clean up the math, then. Does it even need percentages? Why don't we just put the dollar value?
Well, because by law, it is ten percent for these other three buckets.
Minimum, a minimum of ten percent has to go into the first three buckets, and we're, we're putting.
Confuse you even more. These are estimates.
And we don't even know what it's going to be.
These aren't even real.
But you can't put bad math in there.
Yeah, you don't want to say.
Can't say ten.
I agree.
You can't put bad math, so you got to fix the math.
You can't put math in these.
Yes, but they, they have, they said ten percent of estimated revenue, seventy one thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Right, so couldn't you just change I, motion, item D under the motion to have that say?
Not more than five percent.
Approximately estimated ten thousand dollars, or we know it's not estimated for the administrative expenses. We know we want it to be ten, correct? So couldn't we just say, item D could just say ten thousand dollars be appropriated for administrative expenses?
So the, I would want to check, these are written by councils, so.
Yeah, okay.
Want to check.
And I guess specially check the math.
Council, it doesn't seem to be council's.
Gotcha.
Let's.
How about if we move on, if we just.
It's important to note that it's, it's not making sense to you because it's, it's an estimate of revenues that are coming in that don't exist yet.
So that's not the part that's not making sense, Ryan. We understand, seven hundred seventeen thousand is an estimate. We got that. So the language should, even the A, B, C should say, are we doing at least ten percent? Or are we doing a fixed dollar amount? Because that, even A, B, and C are written ambiguously.
Doing ten percent.
And it should say ten percent and forget the dollar value.
I request that we move on to the next one, and we don't take a vote on this one, just because we're going to lose Travis in thirteen minutes.
Okay.
And this is just a math thing, so he may be.
I couldn't, I can hang on a few extra minutes.
All right, well, we'll, we'll, we'll.
Circle back.
Yeah, we'll come back to this one, but the next one, motion two, is the four hundred thousand dollars for the Gleason Public Library. So would somebody make this motion, please?
I move that we support motion two for, for a grant of four hundred thousand dollars for the Gleason Library.
Second.
Any discussion? And this is, want to note that this is coming out of the undesignedated funds.
Funds.
Yeah. Okay, if there's no comments, other comments, then I'd like to take a vote. Arnold I.
Brown I.
Would I?
Reed I.
Now I.
Thank you, and then motion three.
We support granting of three hundred thousand dollars from the undesignedated fund for the Conservation Commission for the Cranberry Bog Dam.
Is this undesignedated?
Yes.
It says it in there, it says undesignedated. I'm wondering why, you know.
Well, we, we made, as the rep on the CPC committee, we, there was, there's a substantial amount of money in the undesignedated funds, and there was some concern on the part of the Historic Commission that because their budget is, their bucket right now is relatively small, and they may have some other projects they're interested in putting forward. They did not want that bucket to be depleted, and so I know that's not relative, relevant to the Cranberry Bog, but it
That was the.
That's the thinking about the library, and so while we were looking, and the same thing is true with the open space bucket, again, the undesignedated is so large that we decided we could take it out of undesignedated, leaving those other buckets for future, you know, specific projects.
But the other undesignedated is the one that we could use for something else, like if we had a very expensive affordable housing, you know, type of project or something like that, we're not allowed to take the conscom money for that. We can only take the undesignedated for that if we're over.
The housing bucket.
Right, and so it's kind of, it's kind of the reverse thinking that we should have, is we should use up what's in those buckets, because we can always spend out of that bucket for conscom.
Right.
But having this come out of the undesignedated takes three hundred thousand out could potentially be spent on, we're tying our hands in the future.
Thank you. I agree. Well, again, the thinking was that in, in both of these cases, we would have to then take it out of two buckets for each of these projects, because neither one, the.
We've done that often.
Yeah.
So you flush out the bucket that's restrictive, and then you take the balance.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Well.
Wow, it's probably too late.
Yeah, it, this, well, the well, the CPC met last Thursday, and these are the, they're, the recommendations we voted on, this language, and the, and the bucket they come out of, in particular, Gleason Public Library, the Historic Commission, their support for this. It's more, they were more supportive if it was going to come out of.
I think, I think the library is, I think the library is kind of also a little bit of a different thing, because there's, there's, there's fewer concerns about the use of the funds, if we're not using it for historic, there can't, there's, there's fewer issues that can arise, right, because of the way they're changing the building. That was my understanding from the last, the last meeting we have.
What do you mean, there are fewer issues?
Yeah, and for the, from the historical perspective, right?
Well, no, it's, it, our, the advice from council was we could very well, we could certainly have been using the historic bucket for this work, because it's a historic building.
With these two actions, we're taking seven hundred thousand dollars out of undesignedated, that could have been used for another purpose.
Right.
You know, if we need to do a land acquisition, our hands are tied.
Yeah. Well, again, no, it depends on what it's for.
But, but to his point.
The other two buckets.
Right, but you could flush the, you could flush the restricted buckets. You can always, ten percent of each year is a floor, right?
Right.
In other words, you can decide in a given year to put fifty percent of your funds into the historic.
There's no need to do that, because.
You don't need to do now, but I'm saying if you.
You always use the undesignedated, we don't, because we don't need to do.
So I agree with Nathan. It should, we should flush the, we should flush the specific buckets. It's kind of like ARPA, flush what fits, and worry about later and later. No, really, and.
Well, I'm trying to, you know, we're, we're very late in the game here.
We're not, they've got it, they can be next week. I mean, everybody.
So statutorily, the motion is what decides whether or not, how you fund something. So the warrant is a, hey, we're planning on talking about this. The motion is what you actually do.
So when we do the motions.
To discuss this. It doesn't have to be correct in the warrant. So what's being done here is a very specific notification to make it more transparent, but the motion could change.
Okay, so I, you know, my motion, I'm going to withdraw my motion that I just made. Because, and, and I kind of like to go back, and, because these are now on motions, they're not on the warrant articles. Now that we're talking here.
It's under, it is under the warrant article, which is number.
I understand that, but.
Sixteen. What is it you want to review?
My motions aren't here.
Well, they are.
Yes, they are here.
Yeah.
How it would be, how it would be moved, right?
Well.
This is our best guess to date, what would be the motion.
Yeah, but the motions handout, the hand, the motions handbook, which, you know, gets done right before town meeting, could change this wording, is the, is what Ryan's trying to say.
Okay, and could I take a crack at doing some re-motions here?
Sure, do you, are you going back to the very first one about the library?
Given the fact, yeah.
Could I just give you some guidance before you?
Yes.
You're, you're on the right track. CPA stuff is a little bit unusual, because it's actually, it's got to be just an up or down vote on the, on the recommendation from the committee. So you actually have a recommendation from the committee. And your problem is not just with the motion here, language. It's the problem with, is with the committee's recommendation. So if you're opposed to the committee's recommendation, they need a new recommendation.
Okay.
So that's what we.
That, that's, that's point one. Point two, forgive me, this, this is a novel one for us, I'm just trying to reason it through. Ryan, of course, is, is correct. The, the motion that's made on the floor of. that's made on the floor of, of town meeting, um, can vary, but if you designated, if, if this language here says the undesigned fund, then that's a, a problem because someone would say, well, gee, I thought it was going to come from another bucket. So to the extent that you want to create a little wiggle room for the committee to come up with a different recommendation, what you have to do is open up in the language here, a range of possibilities, and then they will come in and finalize the recommendation. Is that-
So the range of possibilities means, um, you don't specify the particular fund it's coming out of?
Um, you could, you could, you could use the language that is sometimes used in some of the budget articles, which, and Ryan, you may remember this better than me, I think, um, from any available.
Hmm, from, from available funds. See, the town will vote to, to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds, or borrow pursuant, blah, blah.
Yeah, so you could-
That would be-
From available funds for purposes of the warrant.
For the warrant, yes.
The warrant, sometime, sometime, I mean, this is, um, sort of an art form of, the warrant is supposed to be a warning, so you want to advise people generally what-
Is coming.
Going to happen. And the problem is if you get a little too specific in warning people, then, then you tie your hands.
So at what point can we change the wording that's on this?
You, well, you can change this wording here.
Right.
And then when you get to the motion on the floor of town meeting, you can be more specific. So for example, when this, this language from any available funds that appears in other of the, of budgetary warrant articles, when you actually get to the motion, the motion will specify it's coming from free cash or, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna ra- raise debt for it or whatever. So you can be more, you are more specific.
We don't. But at what point-
Please speak up a little bit.
Oh, Wayne, yeah, can you pull your, uh, mic closer?
Speaking, thank you.
Okay, sorry. So at what point can we change the wording that's in this warrant article?
Sounds like we have to get something back from the CPC.
My question, I guess for Ryan, is how, how, you know, do we have to-
In terms of printing it?
Vote on this CPA, CPA stuff tonight? Or can, like, at what point can the wording be no longer changed?
For the warrant book?
Tonight, yeah.
Tonight.
I, I don't think we'd get a meeting in time before posting.
Okay, I know, but I, I guess I'm wondering, can we just agree that it's going to be made more general and vote on it tonight and then you change it? Change the wording so that it is more general?
I, I, yeah.
We are doing a special meeting, aren't we?
You mean for the police chief next week? Yeah.
Tuesday.
But you're saying that's too late, right? Cause this is-
Specifically, if you wanted me to make it more general, I can quickly do that tomorrow because it's a administrative change.
I, I have to get caught up in the back and forth. What I'm hearing is the CPA has to make the recommendation. And we vote up or down on that. Is that what you said originally? CPC, whatever they're called.
Yeah, CPC.
Yeah, well, ultimately, it's-
We don't change it. They have to change it. We vote yes or no to what they do, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So-
But you can, but you can, you control the, so here's the thing, is you actually control the warrant language.
So we can make it say what we want.
You can, you can make it more general tonight.
Okay.
I see, okay.
Do that.
And then they can come in with the specific language at the time of the meeting.
Okay, so, fine, let's, we should do that, but then following that, we can message them back, we don't like the way you designated it, please fix that, right?
Yes.
If they choose not to.
And we can vote it.
But that's messy. I, what I, I, I agree that the first hurdle is to get it done tonight so you can get the thing. But I don't, what I would like to avoid is a messiness on, on town meeting floor, where one committee says X, the other committee says Y, people don't know what, duh.
And we'll make sure that, um-
So that's the mission.
We can also vote our support on the night of town meeting.
Right, we can vote our support there, but if we vote not to support it because we don't like the buckets they chose, they need a clear message that they need to fix it.
Yeah.
If they want a clean vote.
So motion nine, motion five in 2019 said vote from the Historic Reserve Fund and/or Undesignated Funds. So that language exists in your record. So you could use similar language in this saying-
Was the actual warrant, I mean, the actual motion?
Motion from town meeting. So you could say in the warrant from, I think you were saying, I was doing too much research, open space-
And/or.
Undesignated fund.
Okay.
And then CPC can refine it and you have a month to agree.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll make a crack at new motions if you'd like.
And you're doing this for motion two?
I'm going to start a motion, I'm going to start at motion one.
Yeah, well, we, we resolve item D in motion one.
I'm going to try to in my-
I did that as well, so you just take the percentage out and you're good.
Okay.
Good game.
Yes. Just putting numbers in.
So do we need a new vote on the motion one?
Haven't voted motion.
I move that we-
That's right, we have to vote on it. Sorry, Nathan, go ahead.
I move that the select board support motion one, FY24 CPA appropriations, uh, which is placing, uh, the estimated revenues in the individual buckets, um, as modified tonight, eliminating the percentages.
Second.
Any discussion?
Okay, Ryan?
Yep. Does that math add up? The number math adds up?
So for D, I just took out the 5%. Historically, that's been something you've done, so.
But-
Nathan was, his motion says removing the percentages, but you're saying just remove the-
I'll pick it all up.
Do the dollar values add up to around what we think the dollar value is?
Yes.
Yes. If you take out the estimates, then it can add up to anything.
That's our best guess about what we're going to get, those numbers there. Okay, if, if everybody's comfortable, let's go ahead then and take a vote on motion one as amended. Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
What, L, I?
Read, I.
Now, I.
All right, motion two.
Okay, so, uh, we're going to go back to that, uh, that $400,000 be appropriated, um, from, let's see, um, where did that go down there?
From the historic-
And/or.
And/or undesigned.
Undesignated fund, there it goes, uh, from the, yeah, uh, for the Gleason Public Library.
He didn't say motion two at the beginning.
Sorry.
It's for motion two.
For motion two, yes.
Right, second.
Any discussion on motion two as amended?
Sorry, amended is, is taking, um, and/or it's the-
Motion two is supported for $400,000 to be taken from, um, either the historic, the, the historic and/or the undesigned funds. That was what she made.
Thank you.
All right, um, roll call vote, please. Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
What, L, I?
Read, I.
Now, I.
And motion three, um, that we support a grant of $300,000 of, for, um, restoration of the Cranberry Bog to be taken from the open space and/or undesigned fund.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
What, L, I?
Read, I.
Now, I.
So I do have one question. The, is the end or going to stay or it's going to be changed?
Going to stay in this document.
At town meeting.
Oh, no, it'll change.
It will change.
Motion's handbook, it'll-
It will be specific at that point.
Yeah.
So it can't say end or in those, in that, you can't leave it as end or?
No.
Okay.
Unless it is 50 from this one and 75 from that one.
Has to be prescribed.
And it'll be-
Got it, thank you.
Yep, yeah.
All right, uh, Article 17.
Support Article 17, Senior Means Tested Property Tax Exemption Program.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
What, L, I?
Read, I.
Now, I.
And Article 17. The town office is Saturday hours.
I move that-
It'll be 18.
That'll be 18.
Yep.
How did we get caught up?
Uh, yeah.
Because the CPA article changed. We added it and whatever. Okay, sorry. It'll be better next year.
We have a motion.
So, uh, was the senior means tested property tax article?
No, this is the next one, the town office.
But I'm going-
No, but did we get the wrong thing in the notes?
Say the wrong article number on the senior means tested property tax.
Should have been 17.
Yeah, I said 16.
I said 17. He said 17 because it says Article 18 in our notes.
Oh, the second article.
Oh, I see, there's two.
There's two articles, two 18s. Ah, very cute.
There you go, we got, got right on the-
Now it all makes, we're all caught up, okay.
All right, who's making the motion on the town offices Saturday hours?
Nathan's on our-
With the select board. Support Article 18, town offices, Saturday hours.
Second. Any discussion?
Why do we need this? So that we can choose to close it if we want to?
Do we do this every year?
Saturday?
No.
No, this is a new thing.
Accepting a statute.
What happened in the past.
Well, there's a-
I'll, I'll-
There's a full description, this one's-
Article proposes that the town offices may remain closed on any or all Saturdays as maybe-
No, I can read that.
No, there's, but let him finish because there's more in the revised version.
Acceptance of this statute will allow the town clerk's office to treat Saturdays a legal holiday when calculating filing deadlines such as voter registration or submittal of nomination papers. Further, where the provisions of the Votes Act of 2022 changed the voter registration deadlines to 10 days prior to elections instead of 20, such deadlines will fall on Saturdays. Acceptance of the provisions in this warrant article would allow the town clerk to hold voter registration sessions on Fridays, avoiding the cost of opening town hall on Saturdays.
It's just in here, isn't it?
Right. Okay. Is that clear to everybody? Okay, roll call vote. Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
What, L, I?
Read, I.
Now, I.
Thank you. And-
I move that the select board support Article 19 to amend general bylaws to section 12.1 to add to the list of scenic roads. The road being added is Mark, Martin Street.
Second.
I'll second it, but I have some comments.
Sure, go ahead.
We've never seen a presentation of this. I don't even know where Martin Street is. Um, we don't have a recommendation from the planning board.
It is the planning board that's supposed to put this forward.
Wait, you would think there would, okay.
Right, I mean-
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, but-
I'm agreeing with you, Kate.
Oh, oh, yeah.
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 We haven't had any discussion about this and-
And it waited until our next-
Planning board.
Our, our next, uh-
You know, I will say on this one, the, the, uh, I've forgotten the name of the gentleman, but yeah, it was last fall, we remember. He's been, he's been, uh, agitating to get this on the town meeting and he missed, they missed it. People on this street missed it last spring.
Is this person on the planning board?
You know, I can't remember, but, um, I do remember that we, uh, made a commitment to have it considered on this town meeting.
It has to come from the planning board.
Yeah, well, let's, do you have any recollection, Ryan, whether the planning board has, has-
Came from the planning board.
Yeah, okay.
It did come from the planning board?
They didn't present to us.
They didn't present it to us.
I really think, well, this is, it would, it would be better if we knew more, I, I think, on this one.
They come see us.
Well, it's, again, we have to do this tonight.
We can vote to include it. We don't have to vote to support.
We don't have to vote it tonight.
Oh, should we? That's true. Do you want to wait on the vote?
I mean, it's, it's-
It should come, we should see if they-
As long as we know the planning board supports it, right? I mean, you know, we had something that said that the planning board was recommending this because they, they own all the scenic highways, right? They're the ones that have to do all the meetings if anybody wants to do anything on it.
Well, it, it came from the planning board according to Ryan.
No, but I think as a courtesy to us, they could have presented it to us.
Or they sent us something.
Or sent us something.
Yeah. So, why don't we, so would people prefer not to vote on this?
Prefer not.
I would prefer not to vote on it.
Okay.
So I withdraw my motion.
All right, so let's move on to Article 20.
Do you are keeping it on the warrant?
Yes.
We should take an action to schedule them to come in.
Yeah, I mean, they're, we'll keep it on the warrant. There may be no motion if we can't, you know, if we can't get to terms.
Right. Article 20 is the specialized energy code opt-in, which we, um, have had-
We did have a presentation on that.
And, um-
Letters to explain.
Yeah, we've had-
I move that the select board-
Yeah, so, well, why don't we make a motion and then-
Move the select board.
But wait, before we make a motion, I'd like just to have the discussion about it because, you know, we're, we've talked about this a few times and I just want to, before we make a motion as to whether or not we support it, I think we should just discuss whether or not it's on the warrant.
Right.
Okay, okay, good point.
For all town meeting.
Well, um, uh, let me just speak to this based on, um, uh, some discussion at the Energy Sustainability, uh, Committee Meeting and also, uh, my, um, conversation with, uh, or check in with, um, both John Mativier and, um, Julie Mercer, our, our town planner, about, uh, because I know there were some concerns of, if we had it on the May town meeting and it was, um, approved that right now the language has the code being implemented January 1st of 2024. And it turns out that we can designate when we want the, it, this to become effective. And that seemed, so to both Julie and John, uh, both the town planner and the building, uh, commissioner, being able to move the date to later into 2024, uh, seemed, um, reasonable, uh, allowing the Department of DOER, Energy Resources, is that what it's called now? Anyway, to, um, work out the, some of the details about implementation and how this relates to the other uh, energy code that we have already adopted here in Carlisle. Um, so, anyway, that, that's just one piece of information in terms of whether we would not, we want to do this, have this on the warrant this, this, um, spring.
Barney, may I ask a question?
Yes, please.
So when you talk about the effective date or the implementation date, as an example, if you were going to build a new house and you had your plans and you obtained a building permit prior to that date, but hadn't started construction, then you would meet, you could fall under the old code or if, but it's only after that date if you submit, is that correct?
Correct.
So my, my feelings are that, you know, we, we adopted the stretch code. The stretch code just changed and became more rigorous. Um, I haven't been able to find anything really that's a clear, this, you know, the original is this, the, the new one is this, you know, as of January, and this one is this. Um, I think that, um, I think that we should see what the new one does. Um, but also I'm torn on this, um, because we've also done things like allowed for, um, uh, more flexible accessory apartment options for detached in order to be able to, um, uh, get some more affordable housing in town and to allow people to, um, age in place by maybe having a rental space or maybe they move into it and they rent out their house. I don't know what the impact of this is on that. I mean, I know I've read, I've spent a lot of time reading about it, but the numbers aren't there. Um, and so I think that, you know, we've adopted something that's even gotten better and, um, is going to have to be followed. Um, and so I'm not sure why, you know, to rush into this one right now, um, when we're in conflict with ourselves, right? If, if we really want to be able to build, you know, there is no carve out for affordable housing on this. Um, there is no carve out for somebody who wants to build an accessible, not, um, accessory, um, apartment. Um, so we are in fact driving the cost of living in Carlisle up. Um, if you want, um, more options. Um, and in particularly if you're, you know, if you imagine putting in a, uh, a big accessory apartment on a house, that's going to be a pretty major renovation and would probably kick this in. Obviously, somebody could argue, well, no, it depends upon the size. Obviously, it would depend upon the size. But there's just so many things that I think need to be thought through as to what the implications are. I mean, I, I support this depending upon what the negatives are. And, um, you know, it's kind of like gets, gets to no good deed goes unpunished sometimes. And so for us to just decide we're going to do this without really understanding, you know, the other impacts um, on, on people, um, I think, I think it's, you know, I'm not saying I don't support it. I just think not right now. Let's figure out what, how it's going to impact us and, and learn from the new stretch codes. What's, what's going to be happening? I'm not sure if everybody here has read this new stretch code. Um, it's.
It did, but it's a difficult but interesting lead.
Kind of traded.
And, uh, you know, there's, you know, there's, there's prohibitions that, I mean, kind of surprised me. Um, but, um, they make sense from the environmental perspective. Um, but I just think that when we're doing this, we just need to be transparent as to what it is we are voting on as a town. That's my thoughts.
I, I agree with that. And I thought, the reason I didn't look at it is because I thought we had concluded that we had only heard from the E S C on this, not from builders and assess, the other people who were involved. And we were going to take it up. We were going to give it the time it deserves to be vetted and then put it on fall town meeting. So I was actually surprised to see it on this warrant.
Well, you thought, you know, we decided to put it.
I thought we had at least not voted it, but conceptually.
We certainly.
Decided to push it to fall and so I didn't pay any attention to it and then it appears.
I, I had that same opinion, David. I thought that we were going to, to discuss this more because we've had one kind of meeting and presentation on it. And I think it's a pretty significant, uh, impact to some within the town. And I think there are, as Nathan points out, some unintended consequences that we haven't really fully vetted or thought through. And not to say that we won't end up doing this, but, um, it's unlike the community aggregation program we talked about where, you know, it's, it's, I think, pretty admirable that a town can, you know, have a, a standard and then you can opt out. But that at least, you know, you set your priorities by, by having the default at a particular level. In this case, it's, it's a little different and I think we need to think through that before we make everybody, you know, not able to opt out of it. Or anybody.
Yeah. I agree. I'm comfortable with that, too. I agree that we can, um, we should wait. So that would mean that we are deciding, we're, we'd take a vote on removing this from the.
I think we just remove it.
May warrant article. A warrant.
I think we removed it as well. You want a motion?
I think we should make a formal.
We didn't make the motion on the other one we removed.
Yeah, we just removed it.
True.
I think if it's not on, it's not on.
Not on.
Okay.
I move.
Are we, um, are we still thinking though we would consider it for a, a fall town meeting?
Sure.
Yes.
Fall or spring or whenever we have what we need.
Okay. So I think.
I don't know if we want to commit to fall because we don't know we're having fall. But, um.
Well, I think we have committed to fall. I think there's several things already on it. Can't remember what at the moment.
We should do that formally, though, at a future meeting.
Yeah.
Soon. Make that decision formal. But, um, what?
Yeah, when, when we're talking about the fall town meeting.
Right. I mean, just make the decision whether or not to have it.
Oh, yeah.
What I meant.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, but in the meantime, um, it makes sense then to have somebody. And maybe it's, maybe it's a town planner along with somebody from E S C to, to start working on the things that Nathan's talking about, trying to figure out or figure out whether the date is, when, what progress are they making and when on, you know, on understanding the, um, impact of the, of this stretch code. So we know better the next time around what we're looking at.
I mean, we need a bunch of things, but we, that's a agenda item for a meeting presumably this summer. Need counsel. There's a lot of pieces, right?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Well, yeah.
All right. So we'll take it up in the future.
Consultant that we just put in the.
Right. Right.
Budget.
Okay. All right. So let's move on to, uh.
The select board support Article twenty personnel bylaw amendment.
Second.
It, it's twenty or twenty-one now?
Twenty.
Because we just. Okay, we just bumped one. Good thinking. Okay. Uh, and you seconded Kate. Any conversation about this? Any discussion?
I think it's.
We've heard this.
They passed overdue being done.
Okay. All right. Uh, let's go ahead and take a vote then. All in favor. Uh, Arnold, aye?
Brown, aye.
Arnold, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snow? Snow, aye.
Okay, thank you.
Move, we're all out of Articles to support.
Thank goodness.
I move that, uh, where are you anyway, Travis?
Oh, I'm just out of, out of the, uh, state, so.
Okay. All right.
He's not revealing his destination.
What time zone are you in?
Why not?
Oh, I'm, I'm a couple hours, uh, time zone away, so.
All right. So we'll let you go. I don't know which direction, but.
I, I need to, yeah, I do need to, uh, remove myself from the meeting. I apologize that, uh, I don't know if this dropped up, but, uh, thank you for, for, um, the meeting tonight.
Thank you for hanging in there.
You bet.
Joining us. Okay.
Okay.
Take care.
Thanks.
And then the, uh, town election piece, this is just informational, right? We're not, um, doing any voting on that item.
After that is a bunch of like budget work papers. They're not going to be in, that's not the way it'll be in the pack.
The board, the, um, took that as the day model section.
Oh, okay.
Ooh.
No comment.
Okay. So let's move on to the, um, discussion about the D P W. And this is a discussion, we're not making any, taking any votes tonight. Um, and Ryan's provided us with a, uh, you know, say good night, Wayne.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you for joining us.
The C P A number is total up to seven hundred and seventy.
No kidding. That's what I told him.
I, I, I can explain it if you want.
No.
Just don't. Just fix it. Don't.
One seventy is ten percent. The total was all on.
Right. Well, we, we.
The problem we have here is the number is an estimate. So whatever number you want to estimate, we can then filter down. We just pick that number.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, all right. So, um, do you want to walk us through your slides? Is that how you want to do this, Ryan? Okay, you want to put them up on the, yeah, great.
So we've done the community aggregation. But where are we?
We are on the.
P W structure, yes.
P W structure, yeah.
Okay, you're gonna, okay.
Okay, so the purpose of this is to, uh, start a discussion with you, the select board and the appointing authority on what happens after our long time and um, well thought of superintendent Gary Davis retires. And I'd like to propose some structural changes to the D P W that might help serve as, uh, a bridge, which I'll get to in a second. The purpose of this is to align job titles and wages to, uh, department needs and descriptions to build, to build with, from within, to offer employees a chance to, to be promoted and to advance their skills, which should help us with retention. And then clarify pay and compensation for the budget process. Very brief, simple diagram of the structure. I'm recommending a working director. So this means that the director is involved in, um, in plowing and activities when necessary, but also has the freedom and is alleviated to do the duties that are necessary to run the department, to include budgeting, working with me, uh, engaging with engineers and the type of activities that directors do. This director would be supported by an assistant, which is, which is long overdue. So these, these duties have been distributed throughout town hall. Um, and it needs to be formalized in a position so that we, we know who is going to help with things like payroll, uh, billing, procurement and, and other supports for a working director. The mechanic and the foreman are existing positions and then, uh, worked with Gary and Jim to discuss what's needed in terms of heavy equipment operators. So these are folks with additional certifications in order to accomplish the tasks of the D P W. And then the labor support is, uh, in addition to those operators, everyone does the labor function in order to accomplish the goals. This does include the transfer station and the work at the transfer station. So if you picture coming into the D P W, you would learn laborer skills, uh, hopefully have some already, but learn laborer skills, work in the transfer station to make sure that's operating correctly and then start to build the certifications that would allow you to be a heavy equipment operator. And then we would layer on as you became more experienced management, uh, training so that you could work into a foreman role. And then, uh, from foreman, you would be layering on budgeting and other work experience in order to become a director.
Ask a quick question as we go along. Um, when we're talking about heavy equipment operators, that's backhoes and things, or does that include like the the roll-on truck and snowplow trucks and dump trucks and things like that?
Yeah, specifically hoisting and other roll-on trucks that you require an additional certification in addition to your C D L.
Okay, so wa- including like, uh, what about like snowplow trucks, the, the dump trucks and the snowplow? I was just wondering, do we only have four people who can plow or do we have eight people?
So all eight, including the working director and foreman are C D L licensed in order to drive.
Thank you.
I have a question about the assistant. Is that an administrative assistant or?
Administrative assistant.
So not on the growth path to be the, you, you outlined a career path from, you know, transfer station up to director. But the assistant's not on that path. That's more the clerical or administrative function.
Nor necessarily is the mechanic, although that option is available.
But you're specking, which job are you going to spec? The assistant is a new hire, right?
Well, it wouldn't be if we get to the next slide, which is, um, promoting from within.
Yep.
Which provides the opportunity to bridge between the current era and what the board or the town may want from the D P W. So what do I mean by that? So Gary has been running the department for a long time and it works. And there's been no reason to, uh, to change or break something that works. However, there has been some indications in the master plan and other conversations and other documents I've read about adding on, um, more sophisticated is the wrong term, but, um, more layered services such as engineering and other options that can help the town move forward. If that was the case, is also the opportunity for shared services and regionalization that would completely change the way the D P W runs. So if you were to promote from within, you would be able to bridge from the Gary Davis era to whatever era that you want to determine. But since Gary's leaving in a month, you wouldn't, I think, be able to fully flush out that conversation of where you wanted to go. So this model could help get you to wherever you want it to be, which is why it's being recommended. And I think that's about a five-year decision point. So how do shared services and townwide needs impact how you want your Department of Public Works to look? Uh, this would give you five years to figure that out or sooner if you were ready to make that decision. It also supports professional development, allows for us to spread some money around for that administrative support and for shared, shared services. So reducing the superintendent position down to a director frees up some funds to secure some of the other functions that are needed at the D P W. So here are the, the proposed changes. So I would recommend promoting, uh, Jim to a working director. I think he's proven in his interim time, working, uh, when Gary was, was not able to work. And now that Gary's back in tandem with Gary, that he has the capabilities to be a working director. I've worked with working directors before and he has every skill and more that's necessary there. I would also promote a current employee from the heavy equipment operators to foreman to provide that job mobility and allow us to be competitive with people around us. I would promote, uh, current laborer to the equipment operator for that mobility. And then hire laborers from outside and teach them how to operate public works in Carlisle. I would also add administrative duties to a current part-time employee in the town hall staff in order to make this budget neutral. So this person would now become a municipal assistant, full-time position, and we would combine those funds in order to provide a good job, um, a stable full-time job that supports many functions to include the D P W. I project that anywhere from ten to fifteen hours are needed to support the D P W, which is not quite a full-time position, but is more than a single current employee can handle without impacting their job description.
How is that budget neutral?
So we would take the money that we are paying the superintendent and we would downgrade to a working director position, which would free up funds in that area and then.
That's that nuance. Okay.
Repurpose that to, um, administrative services. And then I would look to either sign an agreement with a neighboring town or use our on-call engineering to supplement for engineering services as needed during this, what I'm calling bridge term.
Can we just promote people into these vacant roles or do we have to put it out to? You know.
Post it?
Do we have to post it?
Um, I believe that the first opportunity to promote is internal by policy.
Okay.
It's not a new position. It's a, it's an.
Yeah, the top one is a new one because it's going from a.
I see what you're saying. Okay, yes, you're right.
Probably should check with council on that question.
Well, it's your decision. You're the appointing authority.
Then we need to check with council. His, his point is legitimate.
Point is it, I guess the working director is a different position.
So it would just be a town rule that we would, there's no state.
Oh, there's no state.
Or anything that would require us to do that.
There's no union or contract that exists, so it is your call.
Okay.
You have so much power.
Um.
But they will look at past prac, I mean, people look at past practice. It's worth the conversation. Well, we. In theory, it's good.
Pretty much turnover. So, uh, I'm not sure we have any past practice.
Right.
Uh, we've, um, and we just hired, uh.
Right. We just.
We did.
We did.
We did, though.
We posted and we had interviews, right?
Yeah.
So.
Um.
I'm not saying I want to post it.
No, it's a short conversation and may, and if it's, as you say, it goes away, but we should check it.
I think it's also, on the other hand, good policy to promote from within.
Yeah.
And, and then if you can't, if you don't have somebody to promote from within, that's why.
But, well, I'm not, yeah, but maybe we're, I'm not being clear. We don't need to post it as in a public job search. It's posting within and letting people apply for it. I totally agree about posting. Promoting from within. The question is whether the practice should be to post it internally and let people bid, you know, request, indicate interest or not. And I don't know that answer. And maybe it's, maybe there's no real rules, but I know, we should just know that.
Because. You mean from inside the D P W or inside?
Inside, no, inside the town.
More than one town employee was interested in the work.
Right.
And we didn't.
Okay.
Well, we can sort that out a little bit more. I wanted to ask about currently, what, how are we getting our engineering services done?
On, on call. As needed. And there hasn't been a lot.
The, the structure that you're showing here, um, the working director assistant mechanic, is that kind of how it's structured now? How is it structured now? Is it more flat or?
If you took out the assistant and the definitions of equipment and laborer, being very clear, that would be the current structure.
Okay. I think this is great.
Yeah.
So with succession planning, um, what we would do is continually develop the pros, proposed director for more responsibility. So this would be budget training with myself and the assistant, um, M C P P O certification to help with procurement, base day training for, uh, layering on asphalt, road and drainage understanding, and then H R leadership training to supplement Aubrey. For the, uh, foreman mechanic and equipment operators, we would send to, uh, base rate training so that everybody using the materials would understand the materials and why they're being used the way they are. And then leadership training for internal mobility. And then for, uh, laborers, we would be providing professional development for certifications that you would need to move to the next step, heavy operator and then foreman. So the overall purpose of this is to, uh, create a self-sustaining department or create the foundation for you to make a different decision with the D P W in the years to come. So, uh, three big considerations. There are, um, you know, I'm not saying tomorrow, but within the next five to 10 years, uh, at least three pending retirements in that. So you're going to have a, a quick turnover and turn a mature force into a youthful force, uh, pretty quickly, which will need, uh, direct leadership and support in order to accomplish your goals. So all of this is designed to overcome that with the idea that we just put out for a laborer position. We were very competitive and we're very competitive in the era and we lost them to Chelmsford. So the idea of just getting new workers in the D P W is a, at least in the short term, a thing of the past. So we have to plan and think about ways that we can attract people and I think this model helps do that.
What sort of training does base state provide?
So base state is an example of an organization that they treat everything from OSHA to, um, different asphalt treatments that allow for, uh, maintaining road surfaces over long.
It's, it's a curriculum that's centered around D P W type jobs?
And it's one-off courses or longer courses, depending on.
Virtual or in-person or a combination? Leads to a associate's degree or something or just certifications?
Just certifications. There's also the idea that we should link our training to Maya in order to get credits for, uh, insurance. So putting computers at the D P W and sitting our folks down and having them do the things that not only make our safe and more productive D P W, but earn us money. Terms of the, just because I think this will come back around, but in terms of posting, if that is a town policy, which, which I will, will make sure that I understand, it's, I don't always. it's, I don't always think it's appropriate to, to post just to post. So if, if the policy isn't that way, I'll probably be coming back and suggesting that, that we look to create opportunities in departments that allow for promotion. So that wouldn't be appropriate in police. That wouldn't be appropriate in fire. And I don't, don't think it's appropriate in DPW, but I, I do need to look.
Oh, I think you're right that you should give preference to the succession within a department. And so maybe you don't post the technical jobs, but when you talk about the admin assistant, you are looking at a town hall staff. I mean, I think it's good, long-term, I think it's good practice to ensure that there's not a sense of favoritism when people are picked to be promoted, right? So just, it's just a different lens. I don't think much would have to change.
I would love to be in an environment where we had that, where there were so many people that would be accused of that.
No, excuse me, but I do think, um, in our hiring prac, practices, we should have some policies like, you know, a list of preferences, for instance. And I know there's some that are mandated, like, you know, um, for instance, um, veterans or whatever, but you know, do you give preference to somebody who lives in town? Do you give a preference to somebody who's already on staff? You know? That should be stated and known to everybody in advance before you make the decisions. This way you have a policy to point to if there's ever, ever any question.
I, I think that's something that's lost in the, in the HR discussion, who's in charge of who and all that, is the idea that, um, a lot of this is going to be dictated to the town in the coming years because of the shrinking job market. So identifying the answers to those questions are going to be extremely important because the towns that have their stuff together are going to be the ones that get the employees and the towns that don't, over, you know, structure fights and things like that are going to be the ones who are, who are scrambling to try and make things work. Um, and it's not hyperbolic to say that town hall function is going to change dramatically in the next 10 years because of the job market. So we need to start looking at how we can address that. And a lot of it is compensation, training, promotion, mobility, climate, workplace, which is harder to policy.
Yeah. So you made a reference to, um, succession planning and sort of intimated that we're going to see some more retirements. You're talking specifically within the DPW?
Yeah, townwide, but yes, in DPW as well.
Yeah.
And I'm not talking because of, you know, it's, it's just math.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments, questions at this point?
I think it's great.
So what are the, what are the next steps on this?
So Gary is retiring on the 12th. Uh, we will need a decision on at least an interim, which I, which I don't think is, is that difficult. Um, but we, we would like to have a transition in place soon. So I, I do think this has to be discussed in the next couple of meetings, where you want to go or you can always appoint an interim and take a pause and then have a longer conversation about this if you want. So there's, there's no rush, but there should be some type of plan.
We have an interim currently.
Gary is working, uh, half-time right now.
Uh, but we had appointed
And he's the permanent foreman, but he's not the interim, uh, DPW.
Okay, I thought we had pointed him as an interim when Gary was still ill.
No, we have Gary sitting down in chair and we're just downloading from his brain as much as we can in order to grasp that knowledge.
We made, we made, voted to make Jim the permanent, he was the interim foreman and then we made him the permanent foreman.
Oh, interim foreman.
Yeah.
Okay, I knew we had pointed him something. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, sorry, sorry. Um.
I mean, do we have to have a?
I'd love to have the structure in and just skip the interim.
Yeah. And do we, um, are you, do you anticipate you'd need a a revision for a job description for the working director?
Yes.
Yeah. And is that something that Aubrey or you are going to be working on?
Yes, and this isn't a huge change from practice. It's the idea of a superintendent usually has multiple divisions and we do not have that structure in Carlisle. So we're more of a director town till you want to fold in parks and rec, um, engineering and other departments. The idea of managing divisions is, is just not, it doesn't exist here. It's really a department.
What, the reason I'm asking is I'm wondering, um, if you could go, i- if we decided at a future meeting fairly soon that we were comfortable going ahead, at least with the working director notion, that we could have that, um, happen sooner in order to be able to then, um, make that change fairly close to when Gary retires.
But we can always take his recommendation and like, you know, I, I would suggest that, like, at the next meeting or the following meeting, if you come to us with a recommendation that we make Jim an interim, if that's who you're thinking, an interim working director, then we can just go ahead and do that.
Yeah.
That's, that's That way, that way at least we, he knows, everybody knows what's happening, right? Does that make sense to you?
I would, I would say the job descri, you should have the position description because it's a new position. The recommendation. And, um, I guess at that same time, if you want the position description of the assistant, so you can roll ahead and start filling that. All the other positions are already described, correct?
Yes, the one, the one thing I will prepare you for is the way I look at assistants is municipal assistants, not specific assistants.
That's fine.
So this will come as a, not as a DPW assistant with specific DPW roles, but an admin assistant who supports all departments, who's assigned DPW tasks.
Okay, but you're moving, you're going to create a full-time position from a part-time position.
Yes, with multiple functions.
We understand that and we understand the cost offset, but, um, so I just think you can prepare. I put it in our little, you know, town, our meeting planner that the next meeting should be fine, right? It won't take long. Present two position descriptions and recommendations.
The next regular meeting, not.
Regular meeting. Two weeks from now.
Yes.
Just want to be quick.
Yeah, yeah. That seemed reasonable.
Looking very happy.
Okay, excellent. Um, then, uh, yeah, we're, we're giving you our direction to
Ready to roll.
Move ahead. Um, all right, are we, uh, let's move on to the town administrators report.
All right.
And we do have two motions that we haven't dealt with here. Do we just do those first? The Concord Youth Theater Beer and Wine Application.
Sure.
Other TA.
I think we need to report, say much about this. We know it's a wine tasting event, fundraiser at FRS and they have their
Yeah, okay.
The only note is the application didn't have an end time and we did get that. It is 9:30 and that's been communicated to the police chief and he accepts that timeframe.
Okay. I move to grant a one-day license to hold a wine tasting event and fundraiser at the First Religious Society to be held on May 5th, 2023 by the Concord Youth Theater.
Any have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We can just vote, a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion carries.
And
So
I think we should just, just for, um, minutes that Travis is, has left the meeting and he did not vote for this.
Yeah.
Travis left the building.
At nine?
Nine twenty.
Twenty, I think.
Nine twenty, yeah.
So it got cut off a little bit here, but this is the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail approved consistent sign that'll go all the way down the trail. And I know we don't have a big piece, but we are being asked to support this. They said, how many signs we want? I said, one.
Where is, what piece?
You know where this is?
Right at, uh, 27 and
Yeah, right at the signal.
That's tiny.
A little further down there.
Yeah.
A little further down. Cause you're already enacted at that moment.
Yeah, it kind of dips in and then comes back out. Yeah.
So we, we should have an entering Carlisle, leaving Carlisle.
It actually does, but I think, um, there's, uh, you know, it's between the 27 crossing and if you make a left on 27, the parking lot for the
Yeah, right, right.
It's between there.
Like 40 feet.
Eight hundred.
Sorry?
Eight hundred.
It's eight hundred feet? Okay.
I had to justify it in my mind because I sit in these meetings and approve signs like this, which, um, will be up and down the trail. So if you approve this sign, we will put one up in the Carlisle section and match the rest of the trail.
I move to approve the request from the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail for an 18 by 12 sign for use in Carlisle.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, uh, voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So are there two, one for each way coming into Carlisle?
Yeah, just so you know.
Yep.
What we expect in this town.
All right, your TA report.
So you'll notice in the, the hallways and walkways, things becoming greener and whiter. That's Al just, just working the whole town hall, just running through and making sure that, that everything looks nice, which I appreciate. And he does it without, without being asked or told. He's just
Yeah, he is.
About cleaning up town hall and, and I just couldn't imagine a better partner for some of the products we have here. So you see some of the stuff coming off the walls as we're doing that. We are going to put everything back in an organized manner. Um, all of those, those plaques and everything that are important to Carlisle history. Our last employee move happened, which means the, uh, space in the town clerk's office has now been freed and the parlone room is starting to empty and move into the town clerk area. So you're going to see the last bit of opening up before we tackle the land use sections. Um, our IT department and Jen worked with Harbor, excuse me, Harbor Networks last week to begin the phone system installation. And we're targeting week of May 19th for, uh, full install on the VoIP system. Um, they walked through everything to, including DPW and the library. We are working with them in, in a team fashion to get them all the information they need to make that happen. And, uh, special thanks to Drive Tech for investing the time necessary to make that good. Records management continues. The highlight of the last couple of weeks has been, we had 60 boxes that were orphaned at the DPW and those have all been sorted and, uh, dealt with. So they are now either filed or properly destroyed by state standards. And then, um, our next records management includes, uh, helping Peggy with the parlone room and the agendas so we can have more functional space. We've started to clean out those unnecessary cabinets, making sure that, that no one needs anything. And then, uh, focus on land use maps to try and get rid of some of the collections of maps that are everywhere and put them in places where people can find them and use them. Some upcoming projects, the fishbowl rooms that I keep talking about, which Peggy has named Shark and Piranha. Uh, will be in the, the entryway.
They ate up all of her space.
Land use file project will be in May and June. Cubicle installation phase one will, will likely be in June as well. It takes a while to get the materials. And then, uh, we'll start doing the historical decorations of wall and space to include some of the empty spaces in here to make it more welcoming. Uh, we talked about Carol, Jim and Scott, so the HR update is complete. In terms of finance, you know that the finance committee met, uh, yesterday. Uh, what you saw in the packet in my report is they've recommended a town reserves and town overlay policies for you. I included that in your packet so that you can review it and then we can, um, discuss and approve it at a, at a next meeting or a later meeting. So please, uh, take a look at that and send me any questions you have.
That was, what was at the end of the, of the, um, warrant, right?
The policies are in, after my report in the packet or attached to the report, looking at individually.
Yeah, they're in here after.
Oh, there it is, overlay. Okay, all right, got it.
And then, uh, you heard about our finance team. In terms of procurement, we've issued the 2023 Road Repair and Reconstruction IFB. Uh, we are getting some interest. We need to spend this, a good chunk of this money by the end of June. So we are hustling a little bit to repair Match Meadow Lane, Pine Brook Road, Rutland Street and E Street, which are, uh, things that have come to you before, but the procurement has started. It closes at the end of this month. So we should know who will be doing that service for us. Uh, good news that long ago, we talked about a regional shared services study with MAPC that was state funded, that was approved in the last week. I met with them and, uh, talked to them about your intentions and scope. So they will be about 90 days for that report. And they're going to come to you a couple of times in order to, to talk to you about progress. So this will look at areas in town that we can share, plus what towns like Carlisle normally share or regionalize so that you can decide whether or not to investigate things further. So this is step one of that regional study.
You're going to have to remind us what we said our, our scope and desires were. It seems to me they, they have changed since we talked about them originally. I think some of the ideas we said, you know, that we thought we decided were not really possible or not feasible, but I'm wondering.
So the scope is in the packet too for, for you to look at and it's not a definitive thing because it is grant. So if you do want it to change, we, we can discuss it. So please take a look at that.
Okay.
It's also partnering, um, very well with Aubrey's succession planning study. So the idea that we would look at shared services and succession planning together for when vacancies occur so that there's a plan in place for you to fill, um, some of these positions that have been in the same hands for a long time and we need a new look, uh, when things change. CCA, we talked about a lot, so I'm not going to talk about that anymore. The assessment working group, we have, uh, narrowed down and I won't read each one of them, but the recommendations and categories that'll be coming before you. So this is for our deckhouse folks who wanted to, um, provide some recommendations to the town and in terms of improving data or improving communication about the tax process. So this has been a good discussion. Our third one is narrowly focusing on the items that are found in my report. And we should be providing a report or a group of recommendations to the select board and the board of assessors for then you to decide whether or not you wanted to do something with them. So it's been a productive working group. We talked about the action items. For, uh, staff recognition, just want to recognize Gretchen G., Gretchen Gallimore for her work on the town website. She's creating policies, training modules for people to, um, you know, understand what they're doing and do things correctly. And then is cleaning up a lot of the sections. So if you went to the subscription section, you would notice her work. So we are narrowing down the categories so people can subscribe to things that make sense to them and get informations timely. This will help us push information as part of our communications plan. The new website is much more transparent and easy to navigate, so I recommend everyone go learn about the town. And then Holly and Jen secured a Carlisle Summer Music Series for Kids and Families Grant from the state. Um, this is going to allow a, a series of children's music performers, uh, to come for Carlisle Children and Families to endure, uh, to enjoy outdoor front lawn performances in June. So the, uh, report indicates several of the multi-generational programming they have planned and think I'm going to take my kids, so I encourage other people to as well.
Still drum should be really fun.
Some dates of interest are on the report as well. And then, Madam Chair, I have the draft agenda.
Yes, thank you. And thanks for all the excellent work that's going on in town hall. Making a lot of good progress. So our agenda, um,
Seems like we want to add, um, DPW again.
Yeah. Put that in and, um,
Let me see, April 25th.
What's the garden club sign?
That's the one they want to, it's actually the Friends of Center Park. They want to put a sign up, um, at Center Park. And they've gone through the historic commission and gotten an agreement and they're now bringing it to the select board to see if we'll approve it.
We had a placeholder in the ESC that we need to work on. They have an old note.
Right. Which we didn't put in this draft. And it may be hard to
Had a whole lot of time left.
Yeah.
The town meeting update may or may not.
Yeah, we gave, actually gave 40 minutes to the town meeting update. What we didn't do tonight, which we should, is assign who's doing what, but that shouldn't take much time. Um, but we, but hopefully part of the town meeting update will have something back from the CPC.
Right.
Right? So we should just note that.
Are they meeting, do they only meet monthly or are they?
Well, yeah, um, but we will have to, yeah, we'll have to deal with, yeah, making that happen.
Minutes as long as we keep ourselves on.
The town meeting update, yeah.
Um, we had that letter from the people who
Oh yeah, the, um, Palmer Way.
Palmer Way, yeah.
Yeah. So Ryan, I know you've scheduled a site visit for that and, um, I think we
Oh, Palmer Way, yeah.
I wrote back to them and said, I think you saw my note that we would maybe deal with it in May, so.
That's fine.
But what about, what about Martin Road?
The scenic road, yeah, so, um, we, I guess we need to follow up with the planning board to make sure they're, um,
That should be part of the town meeting update.
And we should have that, um,
We at least need to get something in writing.
Something written from them, yeah. Yeah. Is that something you can follow up on, Ryan?
I will.
Okay.
So, w- w- do we want them in person for that?
No, I don't think we need that.
This is just a Martin Road.
It'd be part of the TA report.
Okay, but ESC work plan, what are the You don't want to short shrift them.
Right. Right.
Does it need to be before town meeting about?
No, we, we wanted to do this with them in order to begin to figure out what the, what, what that money that we budgeted would be spent on.
Thirty K or wait till afterwards budget.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Well, let's put that in one of our May meetings, too.
So what is the strategic discussion about boards and committees?
So this is something that, um, we've, we've generally talked about in the past about, and this, and Aubrey and I are working on providing a sort of discussion piece. So it's looking at the boards and committees that exist, which of them, uh, should be disbanded or whatever the appropriate term is. Are there any that should be combined? Are there any changes to that list? Secondly, a discussion about how is it that people get onto a board or committee? Have that, have us work through a clear policy about that. Third is about the kind of onboarding process for new members of committees, chairs of committees. And the fourth, I'm trying to remember what the fourth be, anyway, there were four elements.
I'm just wondering if an hour, you don't even have an hour.
Well, it's just, it's a, yeah, it's a-
Time, I mean, because they're-
Yeah, it's just a starting conversation, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, to get us thinking about it and then we can- I think the first part hit us, I mean- Well, let's put it this way, focus a conversation on a, on a series of topics and then start to address each topic.
Who's prepping that?
Yes, Aubrey and I. Yeah, and-
We'll chat with you about tomorrow morning.
Okay. Okay. Um, and Nathan, if, if your game, I was hoping to send you something that, about a draft about, um, how people currently get on boards and committees, you know, sort of the, the, the best practice that we kind of encourage and see what you think of that, if you have any add, things you wanna add or change and that would be helpful, just to have your long time.
Good senior guy.
Help work here. Big sigh, okay, um-
In many ways.
Yeah, so, um, I, I think this, and we may write the police chief contract, so, uh, depending on how the interview goes next week, we might have something that night, this, in two weeks from tonight.
Yep.
Yeah. For the police chief contract, okay.
Okay.
Great, well, let me just, um, check I have that in. Yeah. Uh, I wanted to go back though to one quick thing, uh, Ryan, on the, um, on the dates. So, um, so we've been, so we have two meetings in May and I'm seeing here, and we just talked about, um, well, the town meeting and then two select board meetings. That week that you're away is also a week of, it's a regular select board meeting week on the twenty-third of May. So, um-
I'm seeing one meeting listed up there in May.
Yeah, that's my fault. So you should have one in.
Okay.
But the election is the sixteenth, so you'll have-
There's one before the election.
On the ninth, oh yeah, there should be one listed for the twenty-third, yeah. Anyway, I'm assuming we'll go ahead with our meeting and Aubrey-
We wouldn't, we couldn't, we wouldn't have our first meeting of the new board without-
Yeah, we shouldn't. I don't think we should, I agree. We should probably push the twenty-third to the thirtieth.
Oh.
That's the difference, because we're gonna go into a summer schedule anyway.
I think that's what we're doing, new officers and all that, I think.
We shouldn't.
I think, I think that Ryan should be here.
Yeah, I do too. Okay, so why don't we, oh, does that work for everybody here to go with, um, instead of the, yeah, it would be the, um, last Tuesday in May instead of the fourth Tuesday. It'll be the thirtieth, yeah.
So not the twenty-third, but the thirtieth. Okay.
I'm gonna-
Oh, boy, yeah, I'm, uh, so we-
Anyway.
May nights, on a float trip. But I-
Where are you back?
Anyway. Uh, we're back on Sunday, on the, the following Monday.
You can go to, you can go to June, I guess, I mean-
I can't do the sixth, I've got another board meeting.
I might be able, I might be able to do the thirtieth remotely. We don't get on the river till the next day. I'm just flying out on the thirtieth.
What time zone are you in?
Utah.
It's gonna be early.
Two hours, yeah. Anyway, let me, I'll, I'll, we'll, let's see how that works out. I, I mean, suppose alternatively, we pick another night of the week.
We can't do Memorial Day.
Yeah, you're kinda constrained there because Ryan's off the fifteenth through the nineteenth, right? I'm sorry.
No, it's the next week.
Twenty-second through the twenty-
Twenty-second to the twenty-sixth.
And then you can't do twenty-eighth, and then you're gone the thirtieth.
What about the sixteenth?
Well, then, then it's-
Two weeks.
That's actually the day of the election.
That's the election day. We're not supposed to meet then anyway.
Oh, that's right.
Well, let me-
We could meet on the eighteenth or something.
The sixth you cannot do, Kate, June sixth?
No, I've, uh, an umbrella board meeting.
That-
No, wait a second, it's at, no, it's at six and it's gonna gonna be in, can come later. Usually they, you know, don't-
Well, let me see if I can, let me check and see what time we're landing and whether I could dial in on the thirtieth. I know we're flying out on the thirtieth, um. Yeah. Can't remember what time we're landing.
I will not be here on April twenty-fifth.
April twenty-fifth.
The next meeting.
Will be. Yes, I will be in UK for funeral.
April twenty-five, okay.
I think-
Which is, oh, that's our next meeting, that's the draft meeting.
I don't think we could have the boarding committees discussion without Nathan. There's too much institutional knowledge there. I think then we need to push that one out.
Sorry, I just dropped that on you.
That's okay.
And checked everything.
Yeah, but I mean, it's-
I know.
It's a beautiful life.
Happened.
Can't adjust it.
Yeah.
My squares are too small and the scissors, and three more, you know?
Right, whoa.
I just think that's, that's one where Nathan's, uh, legacy knowledge is really valuable, his insight, so. Wouldn't be comfortable having that. So we should move that one.
Yeah, well, we'll work on that tomorrow.
Yeah.
Um, but then that means we, yeah, we, so we could put something else in there.
Be on the ninth.
Yeah, we could have that, that's true.
No, we can have it on the ninth. I'm okay with, with that. Who, is everybody available on the night?
Yeah, I am. The night after town meeting, yeah.
I mean, we had a note here, uh, Julie wanted to know when the public safety, the rescope. Could she be ready as early as the twenty-fifth or not?
It'd be tight. She is ready for the ninth.
The ninth, all right, all right, let's, let's not, let's not-
Yeah, she's drinking from a fire hose as it is.
So anyway, um, the, the main point, we'll, we'll work on that, but the main point is if we want two meetings in May, we would have to have one the week of the town election, just later in the week. So.
Okay, the town election is-
The town election is on the, um-
Have to have two in May?
We don't have to have two in May, but then, then we go, okay, so then we move out to June.
Wait until June thirteenth, our next meeting?
Yes.
So it would be five weeks.
Yeah, you could go, yeah, we could just skip the meeting, I guess.
Three, four.
But that means, no, we haven't, not elected anybody, or you're just state chair for real. That's fine, that's true. Just get a little longer and the leadership's out.
I was supposed to be done when I went on this float trip. That was the whole idea. No, I'm just-
Yeah.
All right, we'll look at it tomorrow. We can, we can look at it tomorrow, but we know who's here and who's not, um, and we'll- we can also look at what, what we're trying to do, if there's anything that we really wanted to fit in.
Well, I would say, right, I think there's a, there's not, you know, much more we're gonna do before the end of the fiscal, but I think one of the things we should make time for is the summer schedule and what strategic things we wanna-
Right. Right.
That, you know, that needs a little thought.
And that's gotta be a lot of priorities and things like that.
Yeah.
We also have to evaluate ourselves for, for anyways be other-
Well, we have his evaluation, his interim.
Yeah, and also our own evaluation.
And our own evaluation. So we should be doing all that house stuff.
That's what summer normally we do.
Right, yeah.
Should we ask if anybody has community input because?
Yes, yes. Sorry, um-
Chair, I just had one more.
Yes.
Uh, um, native plant walks are happening on the Conant land in May. So these are walks on the Conant land in order to, or observe native plants. So I'm just notifying the board that that's happening. If, um, you require greater permission than that in the future, please let me know. I'm assuming I'm just tracking that and informing you and letting you know.
Yep. That's great. All right, uh, so anybody, um, that's hung out with us this whole time, would you like to offer any comment, please, at the end of the meeting here?
I'm still there. Uh, this is John, uh, shout out to Cynthia for lasting this long too. Um, yeah, you guys, uh, good job. It's ten oh seven, you're twenty minutes over schedule. Probably tired, uh, good job. Thanks for, thanks for doing what you do. The rest of us get paid for it or just enjoy it. You guys are volunteers and working hard. That's it.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Any other comments?
I have a quick comment, um-
Cynthia.
So, yes, this is Cynthia Soren. Uh, there are three different terms I was hearing for the director for DPW. It's working director, acting director, interim director. So are those all, this is not a question, but I just want you to think about it. Working director sounds like acting or interim, so might wanna clarify that.
Uh-huh. Just maybe call it the director.
Would be director, yeah.
EPW director.
Indicating to you that this person would be-
Would be working as well as doing administrative, yeah. Thanks, Cynthia. Okay, well, uh, hearing no other, um, folks interested in doing community input, I entertain a motion to adjourn. I move we adjourn.
Second.[1781.41]